Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, March 6, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Excellent. Let's see here. First order of business, all council members are here. Councilmember Zornz asked for a moment of personal privilege, so I was going to hand the floor over to her.
I'll try not to do a big introduction to this. We noticed this characteristic in Bothell about, oh, 25 years ago. And someone pointed out, Seattle Times has a rant in a rave section, and a couple weeks ago, on February 25th, there was a rave, and I will just read it. "To the Bothell Fire Station First Responders Who Came to Our House in the Middle of the Night and Worked on My Husband for Forty-Five Minutes Trying to Get His Heart Rhythm Back. Even Though They Were Unable to Save My Husband, I So Much Appreciate How Quickly They Arrived and Their Professionalism and Kindness." And that's good to hear about our guys. Thank y'all.
Thank you. The chief's over there, too. Thank you, chief. Or your deputy chief, sorry. We didn't demote him. He was filling in for us. All right, so meeting agenda approval. I do have a proclamation. Is that on this? It's on the updated version in your packet. Any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none. Review of the projected agenda? Oh, yeah. Is there any -- sorry. I'm tired. Yeah, any changes to the projected agenda? Seeing none. Review of public engagement. All right, so we have council conversations on Sunday, March 18th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the Bothell Library. Celebrate Spring at Wayne Golf Course, Tuesday, March 20th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00. Animal Control and Parks and Recreation staff will be on hand to answer questions about the new park. Community egg hunt, Saturday, March 31st, 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. at Doug Allen Sportsfields, next to West Hill Elementary. Those are those. I should probably do the procs, shouldn't I? You have the -- okay, I'm going to come down to the podium. I got three minutes. All right, three minutes, thank you. You got a timer? Okay. So, this is a proclamation of the City of Bothell designating March as Women's History Month, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in our nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working both inside and outside of the home, and whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of this nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and whereas American women have served and continue to serve our country courageously in the military, and whereas the American women have been and continue to be leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued. Now therefore, the Bothell City Council declares March as Women's History Month in the City of Bothell. And I believe, Councilmember McCall, if you would like to add to the proclamation?
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much to the staff and those who wrote this proclamation. It was very well done. I think this is a perfect time for us to recognize the contributions that our women in our community make to our country and our community. March 8th is actually National and International Women's Day, celebrated by countries around the world. And it is my privilege to bring to the council and our community this proclamation, recognizing the women in Bothell who have contributed to making our community a better place for all of us to live, work, and play. Women's Day has a symbol, and it is Venus. It is chosen to represent Women's Day because it represents dignity, justice, and equality. The goal of Women's Day is to recognize the achievement of all women in all parts of the world. So, my goal, and I hope you will join me, is to recognize women in business in the City of Bothell who have contributed greatly to our community, people in business, hospitality, education, health, and wellness. And I would like to invite them to our March 20th meeting to be recognized, and anyone who would like to talk about which -- who in the community they'd like to have recognized, please let me know, and I think it'll be very exciting. So, please join me in recognizing our women who have contributed to our community.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward, too. I appreciate it. It's a good proclamation. So, council committee reports, city manager report. Let's see, do you have any reports? Okay. Any council member have reports? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to quickly update everyone on the 405 stakeholder group. Representative Kloba added an amendment to the supplemental transportation budget in the House for $3 million for 405. And what that does is it speeds up the completion of design for the fixes on 405, Phase 1, by three years. So, rather than being completed, sorry, on 2024, or it would be, I'm sorry, the design would be completed in 2021 rather than 2024. And assuming there's funding available, the completion of the project would fall in line with BRT in 2024. So, it gets us, the schedule's speeded up by three years. So, I think that's fantastic, and I just thought I'd share it with everybody.
Great. Is there other committee reports? Councilmember Agnew?
The EMS Task Force Committee has gotten together a number of times now, and this group is there for -- the medic one levy is coming up to be voted on. It expires in December of 2019. So, there's a number of different groups in it. There's actually four different subgroups in it. It's the Advanced Life Support, the Basic Life Support, Finance, and Regional Services. I'm the chair of the Regional Services. And what we're trying to do is look at the needs that we may have, current needs, future needs, emergent needs, if we have any of those, and to look at some new studies and new pilots. One of the studies we did a number of years ago was, we let our firefighters draw bloods for blood sugar levels. When we did the training of the firefighters, we found that a number of our firefighters were diabetics that didn't know it. Our hope was that if we could find somebody that was prediabetic and start getting them treatment, we would decrease costs overall in the long run for those diseases. So, you know, I'm looking forward to this committee. It's a great committee. A number of my old friends are on it, so it's old home week for me, but I think we got a lot of good work that we're going to be doing and look forward to continuing on.
Is that levy going to be on the, which election?
November of '19.
'19, okay. Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
We just have an update from Seashore, Seashore this month. We heard from PSRC about the five projects selected by Seashore this year in the regional competition. Shoreline submitted two projects, Seattle submitted three projects. The Shoreline projects consist of 145th Corridor, what would be on the west side of the 405, or excuse me, the I-5 interchange. The section that they're talking about improving has over 100 power poles that interfere with sidewalks and pedestrian-style traffic. The 523 I-5 corridor improvement is expected to happen, and they're looking for money for budgeting for the construction at this time. So, that's more of a budgetary improvement. Seattle's projects include a heavy traffic freight mobility section, Madison Corridor Bus Rapid Transit section, and some adaptive signal equipment. Stuff that range in the south part of, it looks like, BRT services, five growth centers will be impacted by that, 7.1 million is what they're seeking. I found it interesting that the five projects that were submitted were primarily on the south part and west of us. We had a pretty robust conversation after Seashore about making sure that all the northern cities are heard, and I was excited to hear that Seashore, members of ETP and SCSCIT, which is Snohomish County Cities for Improved Transportation, are all going to be working in the near future to try to put together a regional meeting that we can attend so that we can all talk about the impacts regionally, the things that ETP's working on, Seashore's working on, and our Snohomish County parts are working on, so that we can all kind of come together and talk about how we can, to work to fix some of our traffic impacts. So, I was super excited about that. Also, Lake Forest Park, part of their Sound Transit funding for park and ride structures. They're looking at the Third Place Books location for doing a TOD development, so that might be coming down the pipeline here soon. So, super excited about the things that are happening, and hopeful we can make sure that some of our projects are included in the future, because there is conversations about making sure that Bothell, Kenmore, and Woodinville are included back in that group. So, very excited. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? So, I went to the mayor's lunch today, and I was, I've been thinking about whether I would, I should say something, but I think I should, that some of the cities have gone and engaged the school districts in the area, and they had their police kind of do an audit, basically, the security around their schools, and then the news wasn't good. So, and I know we have it on our agenda to talk to, with the school board. I was going through here looking for it, but I guess I just wanted to give council a heads-up about that, and I don't know about anybody else, but that, this last incident, it changed me. It's just different than it was before this last shooting that happened to Florida. So, I'm very interested in talking to the, I know, the city manager and I talked a little bit about it, that the chambers, when they had their last school board meeting after the Florida incident, was packed. And, you know, I know if we put up the flag and say, "We want to talk about this with the school board," we might have a similar situation, but I just feel like it's time that we should talk to them and see, like, you know, how safe are those kids? And, you know, are you guys willing to step it up with school enforcement or school officers? So, just thought I'd throw that out there. I was shocked, then when the mayor said, like, "Yeah, it's not, it's not okay." I don't want to even disclose which cities, so let's leave it at that. There's a ton of cities at the table, so. All right, that was my committee report. Let's see, we're on to, is there any other committee reports? None, okay. Visitor comment?
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to let the council know the three topics that I've suggested to the superintendent for your joint meeting on March 20th? So, it's use of fields, how they're going to use the monies that they just received through the different measures that were passed, and then they're going to build a new elementary school, and where might that be? So, that's what I, that's what I've suggested, and I'm waiting back to hear from the superintendent. So, I'd need to know if you'd, we only have an hour. I think the conversation would be great, but maybe it's something we could set up as a study session.
Yeah. I just wanted to alert the council that that conversation happened today. I guess it doesn't really need to be part, that's probably an hour in itself, the three things you have listed there.
But those are just suggestions. So, this is the, this is a joint meeting between the city council and the school board, so you can select whatever topics. We just thought those might be relevant, but please tell me if there's something else you'd like to discuss, and I would pass it on to the superintendent.
Sure. Do you guys have feedback? Councilmember McCall?
Yes, I spoke to the teachers in SCA the other day about what was in the levy for school safety, and there is some dollars in the levy for school safety. Many of our schools, in order for the teacher to have a lockdown, they have to go outside and lock the door, so they really want to change the locks so they can have better security that way. But there is more dollars in there. We spoke a bit about a threat assessment system, which I think is really important when you get all of your entities to begin to talk to each other, the fire department, police department, mental health, schools, the cities, so that everybody is kind of trained to respond to the same threat assessments. And so, that's, if we're going to have a discussion with them, that's one of the ones that I think we should also look at.
Deputy Mayor?
I personally would rather start a conversation about school safety than the levies, and there's plenty of information out there for us to read up on the levies. That's my opinion.
Some people don't read that stuff, though. That's why we thought it might be a good opportunity. Anybody else have input on that? Okay. That did not help, no. So, maybe we should take it offline, so everybody communicate to the city manager about any additional items and how they feel about them being added to the agenda for the joint meeting with the school board. They already want me forced to the issue.
I'd rather you force the issue.
All right, let's sound off. Who wants to go? Let's start on that end. Councilmember Agnew, and the question is, the three items are, what items do you want on the agenda for the school board joint meeting with us?
Use of the monies from the levy, field uses, and the new elementary school. The proposed new, proposed new elementary school.
You know, I agree with all of you that Parkland has probably changed the environment, but I think we could probably meet with them in a study session and talk specifically about the safety of the schoolchildren. I think the items that we have right now will take up the hour, and that's probably what we need to do.
Councilmember McCall?
I would agree and look forward to meeting with the school board as well, and I think there is one voice, though, that I hope that we can listen to, and that's the students. Sometimes you need to hear from them, because then they will tell you how they feel and what makes them feel safe, and what we could do to help them to feel safe. So, it might be something we might not do at the March 20th meeting, but we might think about listening to students, both at high school, middle school, high school, and colleges.
Councilmember McNeil?
I would also concur with that, keeping the June, or the March 20th to how it is now, but I would like to see the school safety come back sooner rather than later. I think it's important with the dynamic things that are happening across our country right now that we take a proactive approach to this and not let something happen within our community.
I'm okay with it, too. Just keep this agenda as it stands.
I would just say, I'm concerned how long it takes to organize these things, and that's why I was in favor of taking one thing off and putting school safety on, because it takes so long to coordinate meetings. And so, it just feels like there's an urgency to the issue right now. That was my 10 cents, two cents, 10 cents.
Councilmember Olson?
I'm good with the three topics that we have.
Councilmember Zornz?
I'm not going to be very helpful here. If we were to take one item off, I would say take the elementary school off, because we know where it's going. And I don't think it's falling within Bothell, is it? It's near Bothell. I think it's out towards Malpe. But as a substitute schoolteacher in the school district, and I've had conversations with students about feeling safe, and I know the variety of ways that you have to lock and unlock the door, and there is no uniform system that makes it easy to lock down, and it's more than just a shooter you worry about. There's other things you worry about in school safety. It's a big conversation. So, I guess I'm good with either way, leaving it as your judgment call. If they're open for another additional conversation, great, let's do that. But if you're feeling a little resistance, then my suggestion would be pull the elementary school off and put that in. That would be my two bits.
So, what I heard, just to make sure that, if council agrees to, so we're going to keep the agenda as it is, but I think there's a significant concern up here about, if we can, if we have time and capacity to have the police department engage them at some level to find out what, if anything, that we can do to support their security.
I think the chief could give you a few points. We're working very closely with the school district. In fact, we just did a tabletop for active shooter, and the school district participated, and we're doing a full scenario in a couple of months, and the school district, along with superintendent, will be participating in that. So, I think there's a great deal of collaboration and communication. The chief meets monthly with the school superintendent, so if you wanted to add a few comforting words?
Well, I mean, you know, given the circumstances, I completely understand why this is front and center on everybody's mind, but it's been front and center on the minds of the police department for several years. And so, I would look forward to the opportunity to share with you the many different things that we've been doing. Mayor, we've done, we've done what you've said other cities have done. In fact, just recently, we've reached out again, and we're going to be going back to our schools. It's really a detailed conversation, so I don't want to take up your time right now with that. We do officer training. As the city manager said, we're, we've got another joint training with the school district, and I meet monthly with the school superintendent for one-on-one meetings. In fact, just sent her an email today recommending that in our next one-on-one, that I bring the fire chief so that we can have another conversation, because that's also, you know, we think about active shooter, but our fire department is a very important partner as far as how we manage situations like that. And in fact, we train together. When we do our scenes of violence policy, we brought the fire department in on a regional level. So, there's a lot to it, and it would be a long conversation, so, but happy anytime. I think you'd be proud of what we've done. There's still work to be done, but we've certainly had this front and center in our minds for quite a while.
That's super good news. Yeah, I would love to have a study session on that, just to hear, in the public, to hear what we have been doing, so. Sorry, I totally derailed our meeting. So, let's go, let's move on to visitor comments. Oops, that's the wrong page. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And I have two sign-up sheets. The first is Margaret Turcot.
Hello there. I'm Margaret Turcot. I live in Bridlewood and have lived there for several years. I moved to Bothell in 1978 with my family, and I want you to know that the Bothell Historical Museum has just met its 50th year. In 1968, the first meeting of the historical society was in Carlton Erickson's house, the son of Gerhart Erickson, one of our most important pioneers. For several months that year, they were looking for a place to have a museum, and the Hannan House became available, and that's on Main Street, it was on Main Street. And so, in 1969, they moved into the Hannan House on July 4th, opened it to the public. In the meantime, they moved the Beckstrom Log Cabin from the Beckstrom Hill down behind the Hannan House on Main Street. I didn't know that, but it was there. And then across the street from that was Bothell's first schoolhouse. And so, you have all those three buildings there on Main Street. In 1978, the Park of Bothell Landing was created, and they moved the Lydell House down there, and then soon after that, they moved the Hannan House and the Log Cabin, and then in '89, they moved the schoolhouse. And so, when we think about all the things that happened to get this museum going and where we are today, we're really excited about celebrating our 50 years. And so, our 50 years of gleam in the eye of the people that started it, then we had a building, then we moved to the park. So, we're going to be celebrating, starting this year and next year, and who knows, even longer, because we're just so proud of what our, the people have done before us, and really have a lot of, we want to honor them for what, for what they've done. Oops, so I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, you got time. If you had more to say, it'll start beeping at you and be really annoying when it's done.
Okay. Yeah, that's about it. And we're open from 1:00 to 4:00 on Sundays down in the park, all three buildings, the cabin, the schoolhouse, and the Hannan House. And we're open from April through October. We are also open at Christmas time for tea, for Christmas tea, and other things. We're going to try to be open a little bit more and do presentations and historical stories and things like that for people. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Just one added. Margaret is the author of the Bothell book, which is now streaming out of Mini Mini, or she's sold 800 copies. So, we have a real historian also in our midst.
Thank you. Next is Al Faganbaum.
He's back. Before I start, I want to put my one and a half cents into what you discussed about the school board meetings. I agree with Davina. Safety is paramount. The rest of the stuff doesn't really matter in comparison. That's just my opinion. But to get to what I'm here for, I've come to the sad conclusion, and I could be 100% wrong, which you will probably be willing to tell me, that you people don't know how to set salaries. For example, you guys should be paid at least three times more than what you're paying yourselves for the amount of work and time that I know that you put in, because I'm a little bit familiar with city governments. I don't think, I don't think you pay yourselves enough. On the other hand, when I, when I read what the city manager's wage is, the money you're paying for the city manager position, this is not a knock on her, but you're paying a Rolls Royce price for a Toyota Camry position, in my opinion. If I look at the governor's salary, the governor of the state makes $172,000 a year. The President of the United States' salary is $400,000 a year. I don't see where Bothell can justify a $200,000 salary for the city manager. It just doesn't work for me. I don't know, but, and the people in this city who should be paid are sitting right here, fire chief, police chief, finance director. Those are the three most important people, in my opinion, with the most responsibilities. I mean, these people are responsible for everyone's safety, life and death. You heard her read about the rave about this woman thanking the fire department for trying to save her husband's life. I mean, this is what these people do. Maybe you, maybe they are paid adequately, I don't know. I have not researched that, so I can't say. But I'm saying, with regard to everybody else, I mean, I think you should look at that. What do people have to do? What are their responsibilities? That's what you should pay for. And I don't think that a city manager's position in any city corresponds to what the governor's position is or the President of the United States. So, that's, that's what I wanted to say about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to give public comment? Seeing none. You only get one time per meeting.
I have, just have a question. It has nothing to do with this. Sound Transit, the--
Will you go to the microphone? This is being recorded.
The park and ride at Kaiser Way is ridiculous. I mean, it's just, it's a shoebox for a lot of cars. Is there any possibility that some of the property down at intersection of 522 and 527, they would be interested in using to build a parking garage? Because there's just not enough room for the amount of cars that try to ride the buses. Does anybody, have they talked about that? Have any of you talked about them possibly being, being interested in expanding the park and ride, doing away with that one there and putting up a three- or four-story building to house, house cars? I'm just curious, because I saw, I was down at the bus stop Sunday, and they had a notice up that November 1st, the park and ride is going to be for carpool parking. How is that going to solve anything? You're still going to have the same number of cars. Very few people are going to carpool to go to the park and ride. I just don't see that as, as having a significant impact on the lack of parking spaces, so I just want, I know you guys have been talking with Sound Transit, so I'm just curious as to whether any thought has been given to putting up a parking garage, because in reality, that's what we need here.
So, I'm going to hand you off to the city manager. She can give you all sorts of good information about that, okay?
Okay.
All right. Anybody else that would like to give public comment? Seeing none. No items have been pulled from consent. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. No offense. He was before you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. So I'm going to hand you off to the city manager. She can give you all sorts of good information about that, okay? All right. Anybody else that would like to give a public comment? Seeing none. No items have been pulled from consent. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. No offense. He was before you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. We're into new business. AV 18-039, appointments to the Sound Transit elected leadership group for both the 522 and 405 Bus Rapid Transit projects. And Council, or City Manager, you have a brief presentation? All right, you don't.
It's just an opportunity, these are the two groups. Sound Transit was here a couple of weeks ago. These are the two leadership, elected leadership groups that Sound Transit has put together so that there's input from the elected leaders on both of these critical projects. So this is an opportunity for the council to appoint someone to serve on, each, one person on each of those committees.
And there was an email today, I didn't have a chance to read on this.
We got some information on both times, meeting times, at least for the first meeting and possibly for the other one on, on 522. And then Deputy Mayor got some information on the 405 meeting that I thought might be helpful as you make your decision on who to appoint.
Did everybody read that, that schedule of when the meetings happen? Okay, so I'm at, I'm at a loss there, but that's okay. I do not want either. I'm so busy right now. So I guess we'll open up the floor to people interested in the 522 stakeholder meeting. Is there anybody interested in doing that? 522. You want to do it?
Yeah, I would offer to do it, just because it kind of coalsines with the Seashore.
Okay, and you got the schedule. You can make it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? You're on it. Congratulations. All right, the 405 stakeholder group, so anybody interested in doing that? Councilmember McAuliffe and I believe Deputy Mayor. I guess we, we vote. So the first one that get four votes would be appointed. Is everybody okay with that? Do you want to flip a coin to see who goes first? Am we okay? Okay.
Actually, I think Davina may be in a position to take that because of some other committees you're serving on. Is that correct?
Yeah, when I, I reached, yeah, I reached out, just, I wanted more information, because I wasn't sure when they were meeting and, and kind of what the process was. And I just reached out to the gentleman with Sound Transit, who had sent the email about the 522 meeting times, and he said that they're, they're trying to kind of, they'd like to have some overlap between EAG and this position, and they're even thinking about having the meetings back-to-back. And so it seemed to make sense with everything that I've been working on, that it would kind of all coalesce. So that's why I'm offering to be on it.
So given that, I would not be in a position to, to do that, so I, I would support you.
Thanks. I, I do, I would like to recommend that we maybe have, because the meetings aren't settled, I think it might be nice to have backup alternates, because we don't know when the meetings are. So I would offer that suggestion.
How about the ones that are on it? If you can't make it, you find another council member to take your spot. Does that sound good? Instead of just having one alternate?
That's perfect. And Liam, since you're on Seashore also, would you be willing to be the alternate on that?
Yeah.
I absolutely would be.
Great, thank you.
Just bring me up to date.
Okay.
All right, we got it solved. Excellent, good job. All right, moving on. 18-040, professional service agreement with Cocker Fantasy Incorporated for research, public engagement, and communication consulting services related to a potential November 2018 ballot measure. And we have Tori, or, you're not that new anymore. Deputy City Manager? Assistant City Manager?
Sort of new. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. Came before you this evening to talk about an item for council consideration and approval this evening, which is a professional services agreement with Cocker Fantasy Incorporated, the communications consulting firm for research, public engagement, and communications consulting related to the evaluation of a potential public safety ballot measure or measures. As a little bit of context, as you know from the recent presentation of the CAFR by Finance Director Tammy Shackman, the city has a growing tax base with an affluent population and increased AV. Regardless of that, though, the city's operating reserve has weakened recently because service delivery levels are straining the general fund and having a negative impact on fund balance. So there'll be a lot more conversation on that this year. One of the strains on that is some of the required services that we offer in public safety, which we are very proud to offer and offer great quality services. But this is the community conversation around choices about levels of service and what they're looking for. So council gave direction at the October 17th, 2017 meeting to begin looking at how to engage the community in a conversation as to how we would like to address this and what kind of levels of service they're looking for. In order to do this well, the city ran a procurement process from February and March to evaluate our options in consulting services to help us do this correctly. The recommended contract before you is with Cocker Fantasy Incorporated. And with me today, I do have in the back Chris Fawcett, the partner and our project contact for this, and then also Vanessa Lund, Research Director. So if you have specific questions on what is in the contract and proposed scope, they would be happy to answer those as well. Included in, just as a little background on Cocker Fantasy, their previous clients include the Lynnwood Fire District 1 discussion around regional fire authority there, and then the Renton RFA, and they've also done media training for Seattle Police Department, so have some familiarity with that. And also involvement with Sound Transit 2 and 3. So a lot of experience around public conversations on these kind of issues. And also things like how to do the city's proper role in it. There's a lot of things the city won't do as part of this. We can educate the public, we can explain the needs, but there are definitely some things that we won't be doing, so. So anyway, just really important to do this correctly. The services that we've offered, I just wanted to highlight that it begins with a lot of listening. So very much included big pieces of research there. So starting with some qualitative research, really listening to stakeholders in the community to learn how they're feeling right now. Lot of involvement with council as our elected representatives, of course, and, and working with stakeholder groups and community groups to discern how they're feeling on these issues. Moves into public engagement, as the council has emphasized, you know, the emphasis on this is in some sincere, good-listening, two-way public engagement. So making sure that we're doing that process correctly and up to your expectations on community engagement. And when the council has made a decision, it includes communication services at that point, too, within the boundaries of the PDC, to educate the community on the needs, but to, to do our, our role in this and to do it well in evaluating different options. So that is the contract in front of you. It has a not to exceed for $80,252, I believe, and the scope of services explains the variety of services offered in there. If any of those are not completed, the contract will not be, we wouldn't bill against that piece of the contract. So the top number would be $80,000, but it could be less than that, depending on the needs for the project.
Just for the listening public, can you explain, or what PDC stands for and what they actually do?
Sure. So I will, this is Public Disclosure Commission. I'm just making sure I've had some cold meds, so I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly. So public disclosure, and that is to ensure that public resources are spent appropriately. So we have a role in knowing our operations and as city professionals, professionally managing our work and providing high-quality professional services. And that is the sort of role that we're allowed to play in projects like this. In turn, there is a very limited role of advocacy, so we can only talk about what it is that we're looking for, but other than that, we have to make sure that public resources are spent appropriately.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions from council? You guys are quiet tonight. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so it's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McAuliffe to approve the professional service agreement with Cocker Fantasy Incorporated for research, public engagement, and communications consulting services to engage the community and assess options for a potential November 2018 public safety ballot measure. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously. We are on to AV 18-041, update of the City Council's goals for 2018. And City Manager, did you want to talk to this one, I'll bet? Go ahead.
So I was just going to kind of go through the history. So the council established goals for the biennial budget in late 2016, early 2017. We confirmed those goals at a council meeting in March 2017, and that's how we drive the budget process. It's how I prioritize the work and how things get done from a strategic objective standpoint, how we put our work plans together to accomplish the things that the council wants us to accomplish. In February and January of this year, we met again, just to take a look at those goals for the remainder of 2018. You will be looking at new goals for 2019, '20 biennial budget. We wanted to talk to you and just have you refresh, tell you about the things that we've accomplished, and see if there were some tweaks or some changes that you wanted to make for 2018. And this is not affiliated with any kind of a budget amendment. This is just sort of restructuring and, and again, rebalancing, refreshing your 2017, '18 goals. And so we spent the day together on January 19th and, and went through all of your goals, and you did make some adjustments to them. And so this agenda item is to solidify that, make sure that we're all talking about the same things. As we put together then the strategic objectives, I'll be bringing a scorecard to you at the end of April. It'll show these goals and then all of the strategic objectives that we've identified that are working towards achieving those goals for you. So I'm just going to run through each of the goals individually and just share an update or a tweak or a change or an addition that you made as part of the process. And again, it'll all be clarified and written out when we bring the scorecard back to you in April. So first of all, fiscal responsibility and stability. So we added the word responsibility. We also added efficiencies and innovation and reinstating the pre-recession general fund reserves as a goal. So we want to be efficient and want to have innovative programs so that, that we can deliver the services for the most cost-effective way we can, and really looking at reinstating those general fund reserves. We didn't make any changes to the citywide technology nor the Safe Streets program. We did make a change to, or you did make a change to the community health for those in need. We want to locate funding sources for this very successful navigator program that we are in a pilot program with and have about 20 hours with this mental health professional working with our police department. And we all, we also, you also added, connect our community to services. The city doesn't provide any types of social services. That's generally done by the Health District, the counties, and, and private providers, but we, our role can be to connect our community to those services. And so you added that as well. You didn't make any changes to the public safety strategy. For economic development, you merged a couple of things together under one economic development goal, and that includes the Canyon Park Master Plan, the Main Street Enhancement Project, and to complete the downtown redevelopment. Part of that downtown redevelopment is the disposition of the final four properties that the city owns, and those are right here in the downtown area. We want to take a look at how we move forward with that. It's a very important part of our strategy for not only paying the lease payments on this building, but continuing that, that revitalization and renovation that's happening here in downtown Bothell. Affordable housing strategy, you didn't make any changes to that. We merged a couple of community-related ones into a, into a subtitle called, or a title called Community Connections. And under that, you added expand the city's capacity for volunteer management, transparency, effective regional engagement, and being a welcoming community. And I'm excited to share with you that one of my goals in coming here and waiting for the right HR director to come in and, and lead this initiative is we've initiated a staff level diversity committee. And so we're excited to start that work and, and look at who we are as an organization and how we initiate that feeling of being a welcoming community and a welcoming city. So that's for the Community Connections. And then Parks, Recreation, Open Space Partnerships, merged a couple of things under there as well. Most notably, the Wayne Golf Course was a goal by itself, but since we've purchased most of that, aside from the five acres that still need to be purchased this year, we need to look at maintaining that property and so developing a maintenance plan for that. The North Creek Forest Master Plan, as well as looking at Shelton View Forest as an opportunity for the community. And then finally, under the citywide training, team building, and organizational development, you asked us to add succession planning as one of our priorities as we work with our team in, in the years ahead. So those are the changes that you made as part of that retreat that we did together, and that's what's included in your staff report. And I'd be happy to answer questions or respond to any, any changes you'd like to make.
Okay. Is there any questions, Deputy Mayor?
So the, the list, as it appears in the packet, has Canyon Park Master Plan and Wayne Golf Course as separate, but no, well, well, I thought that was the old one. Oh, so the, the first one is the new one, the second one is the old one? Okay. So I apologize. I did have a question regarding the economic development. When you talked about the downtown development, the, I think the last we talked in terms of selling those remaining properties, we were waiting for cleanup to occur, and we expect or anticipate that Lot D will be ready to be sold in 2018, but it's not currently on the goal list for this year. And I wanted to propose that we consider selling Lot D as soon as possible after it's cleaned up, for several reasons. One, because the market's high, and Lot O sold for $8 million, and if all things remain equal, I, I would think we could sell it for around that amount. We, I think I've heard that we're anticipating a recession in 2019. So in my view, it would make sense to try to sell at least that one property, which is, in my opinion, the crown jewel of, of Bothell, our properties. I feel fairly confident that we know what the community wants. I understand going out for RFPs for the other properties, but I get asked all the time where the specialty grocery store is and how come it's not here yet? One of the, one of the people is in the audience. And then I, I think it plays into several other of the goals, and that, that is, with those funds, we could potentially fund the Canyon Park Master Plan, which we don't currently have budgeted. We could possibly do the match for the pedestrian bridge in Bothell Landing, which we don't, which we'll lose federal funding for if we don't. We could potentially hire an economic development director to help us make the most of the remaining properties, and, I mean, that's a small, out of 8 million, you know, that salary is, is pretty small. I mean, obviously, council would need to weigh in, but there's, there, I mean, and then the general fund reserves, which we've talked about quite a bit. So I feel like there, there are several compelling reasons to move ahead when we can on Lot D rather than wait till 2019. So again, it meets the fiscal responsibility and stability goal, it meets the economic development goal. So anyway, I'm happy to hear other people weigh in, but that's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm at with the subcategory of downtown development.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And I've given a great deal of thought to the properties and also to Lot D and kind of read up on different issues. However, I still feel that, and I'm going to ask, as a council member, I get some education on the history of where we've been in, with these properties, and a little bit of information on when they would be ready to be sold. Is it, you know, after it's cleaned up, or can we sell before? I just need some more information so I can make that decision. I do think that we need to look at an economic development director and decide if that's where we want to go. So that's kind of my issue, and because I'm new, I might not know as much as many of you, but I think we need to be brought up to, I need to be brought up to speed.
City Manager, do you want to share in on that?
I'd be happy to put that together. Like, it's great.
Do we have the bandwidth to try to push Lot D forward? Or is it just piling on to a big pile?
It's, I mean, it's, it's one of the things we talked about, was the volume of work, but I think if it's a council priority, and I, I think the Deputy Mayor has an excellent strategy in mind, and I, I think it'd be worth sort of moving that up higher on the list.
Okay. Councilmember Zornz?
Quick comment. I also support the idea of selling Lot D. Some of the concerns that we have for the other lots are less, less significant and germane to Lot D. Lot D is juxtaposed with the SHAG apartments. And unless if there's other insight that I am missing, it looks like a win-win if we could move forward with, a win-win-win-win, if we could move forward with that. But if there's something that I'm missing, I sure want to hear it.
Councilmember Agnew?
If I could clarify really quickly, it looks like our attachment is wrong. So you had some confusion, and you are right, too. So it kind of got half-updated. I think we had a miscommunication. So please look at the staff report for your goals and not the attachment. We'll, we'll fix that with the, when I bring the staff report for the goal scorecard, we'll fix that for you. fix that for you.
Councilmember Agnew?
And under the Community Connection, we talked about a volunteer coordinator. How are we doing with that?
So, we're struggling a little bit with that. One is just the volume of work and sort of identifying what that individual would work on and sort of the capacity of that. And one of the challenges that the interim Parks and Recreation Director and I are having is the sort of the caliber of work that we're looking at. So, there's volunteerism, that sort of fundamental and basic, right? So, you come out and maybe you throw some wood chips down and do some paths and things like that. But I think one of the things the council was interested in was really tapping into some of the energy around the Wayne Golf Course and some of the more complicated projects. And I think what we're struggling with is, all of that is, is a much more complicated process and potentially requires permits and working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so, then you're sort of looking at a higher level. Is that an environmental specialist? Is that someone sort of who understands the regulatory role? And so, we haven't moved forward with that at this time, partially for those reasons. And then also, I'm in a bit of a conservative phase at this point because of the levy and sort of not knowing what's going to happen for 19 and 20. I'm hesitant, although there is a great rate of return on volunteer programs, it is still a discretionary, it's a discretionary service. And I'm hesitant to bring someone on in a discretionary role. And ultimately, if the levy doesn't pass, that we might have to look at layoffs. And so, we're sort of in a, in a hold pattern at this point. So, I understand it's a goal, but I'm, I haven't, I haven't moved forward with it yet.
Thank you.
So, I have a quick question on Lot D, and this is probably for the Public Works Director. The dirty dirt, how is it, is it going to be cleaned this year? Do we have any, what's our schedule?
Good evening. So, the, our contractor is starting with the electrical resistance heating portion of the cleanup, which is projected to take about six months. So, we should be done with that first phase by probably August, September of this year. And then, after that, we'll be installing our wells, injection wells, and recirculation wells that will continue cleaning up the rest of the plume. The electrical resistance heating is focused on the source of the contamination. So, there will be several years of cleanup activities that go forward after the ERH, as we call it. But development can occur after that. And we do have the consent decree for the solvents. We have a small petroleum site that's also on that property that we are currently working with the Department of Ecology to figure out a way to, to resolve that contamination concurrently with the solvents. So, maybe yes.
Do we need, do we need to have, oh, I guess you said it could be being cleaned up for years afterwards so that we don't need a clean bill of monitoring or anything like that to actually sell the property and have development happen?
Correct. And now that we have the consent decree, it really formalizes, at least for the solvents, what the expected activities that the city needs to complete and what the protections are that come with the consent decree that you all approved a few months back. So, we can definitely spruce up the report that we provided before about cleanup activities and provide you with some, some dates and some parameters, if that would be helpful.
I was just to say everybody knew that, you know, instead of 2019, it's fourth quarter 2018 to move it up. But I don't know much of a difference there, that is. But, okay, thank you. I was just curious. City Manager?
That would, that's something we would include in the presentation on the downtown properties that the council member asked for. I think that'd be helpful to know sort of where we are on, because three out of the four that we own are contaminated.
And we've already had purchase and sale agreements on all of them and they came back.
Correct.
Yes. That's the fascinating part. So, I really liked the goals. I think we had a really good retreat and all the council members really contributed to these goals. And I think it's, I think it really reflects where, where we're at as a group, and I'm really happy with them. So, is there anybody else wanting to give or ask questions or give comments? Or do we have, are we ready for a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move the recommended action.
Second.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the proposed revised to city council goals for 2018 presented in Attachment 1. Any discussion on the motion? I just have one thing real quick. So, those will become effective immediately. So, and then, and then they'll inform the 2019-2020 business. So, I think that's great. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could you make the reference to the staff report rather than the attachment since the attachment is incorrect?
Oh, is that, is that a different amendment? Do we need to do a different motion? Because the recommended action, I just read it off.
Yes, you would have to, well, you, you don't have to follow the recommended action. You can make a motion to adopt the 2018 goals as listed in the Agenda Bill summary as opposed to the attachment.
Even though I got a motion and a second, do we need to vote on that first?
Sure.
Okay.
People could withdraw their motion, but you can also vote on it.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. You withdraw your motion?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a new motion?
I would. I, see if I can remember this. I move that we initiate, oh, I went, I went to the next item. Hold on. I move that we approve the Agenda Bill summary version of the city council goals for 2018.
Second.
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve the proposed revised city council goals for 2018 that is not presented in Attachment 1, but in the council memo. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously. Moving right along. AB 18-042 Staff Briefing Canyon Park Regional Growth Center Visioning Project Phase 1 of the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. And we have Mr. Blackburn. Welcome.
This is, of course, a briefing to the council regarding the Canyon Park visioning process. And essentially, what I want to identify is that the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, which is within our Canyon Park Subarea, is part of a larger-scale kind of a plan from the Puget Sound Regional Council. And that's basically the Vision 2040 provisions. Now, one of the things that we would have done here in the last year is that we have hired a professional consultant, Community Attributes Incorporated, as well as NVBJ Architecture and Farron Pierce Transportation Engineers and staff. And we've been engaged in this activity since July of 2017. Now, a regional growth center is identified within the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2040 Plan. And those are areas that are expected to accommodate measurable amounts of population and employment growth. In fact, Puget Sound Regional Council has identified minimum activity units. And basically, activity units are people. And within those areas, you're supposed to maintain certain, attain a certain number of both existing and planned activity units. Now, right now, Puget Sound Regional Council identifies our activity unit level within the Canyon Park area as about 14. We think we may be a little closer to 18. But the minimum that'll be acceptable in the future will be 45 planned activity units per acre. And that's an important thing because we wanted to start this process with this visioning. Now, Canyon Park is about 735 acres, and it has about 10,000 employees, about 1,800 residents, but it also has about 250 acres of critical areas and critical area buffers, streams, wetlands, and things like that. And that's a pretty significant part of this area is that the extent of those critical areas and buffers. And again, one of the things that we've identified is that that's actually an amenity for this area. It is important as we talk about some of the other provisions now. I do want to identify something that's really important here, and that is that this is a business park that is very successful. We have 10,000 employees out in this location, maybe even a few more. That's kind of basically our best guess right now. However, there are some major national and international companies that do really major and important work in both the biotechnology, biotechnology and biomedical device arena. And as you look at this map, and I think this is really important, we have some companies like Seattle Genetics, we have Phillips, we have CMC, which used to be Icos, we have Romac, Molina, Leviton. It's just a who's who of really awesome companies. And those companies have a total of 47, 4800 people in a manufacturing provision. That is really important jobs. This is a really critical area, not just to the city of Bothell, but the entire region. And you can see from this list, there is just, there's 400 and some odd companies within this area. And that's amazing, you know, 9,200 employees. That's just phenomenal how many people we have and how successful this area has been. Now, part of this project was to do a number of things. First of all, is of course stakeholder and public engagement. And essentially, what the city did is we brought together about 30 stakeholders. And these are people who have businesses within the RGC, we have property owners within the RGC, as well as residents surrounding the RGC. And we had that stakeholder group, it's kind of our main focus group, okay, to check what was, we were thinking about this. We also did a very important public engagement part. We had an open house, we sent letters, little postcards to about 1,800 people, as well as, of course, we had this really interesting portal on our webpage that people could go on to and make comment. And it was really interesting. One of the other things that was important here was to understand some of the economic and market conditions within this area. And that was one of the things that was done in the report, understanding the infrastructure. And basically, the infrastructure was not just roads, but, you know, sanitary sewer, water, and electrical. In fact, one of the things that was interesting, the Puget Sound Public Utilities just recently significantly upgraded the substation within this area. So, those are all things that were important. Finally, we want to talk about an urban design framework and a vision framework and strategies. Now, the stakeholder engagement included a bunch of items where the, the stakeholders identified some really strong strengths. And we identified the open space and green. That was really something that was identified. They also identified the existing biomedical industry cluster that exists in the area. That is a huge, huge factor within this area. Further, they identified that transportation access, traffic congestion, and we all know that that's a situation that is a very major concern of these stakeholders. Amenities and services, one of the other items they identified is that there's just not that many amenities for their employees. And that's coffee shops, restaurants, recreation, and not, not a lot of recreation there. There's a lot of trails, but not a lot of things like, you know, tennis or anything like that. Now, the employees are identifying that the community is really impacting the quality of their life, and it's also affecting the company's abilities to recruit future employees. And interestingly enough, during this process, a couple of the companies identified that their employees are pretty comfortable with this urban kind of a setting. They aren't necessarily suburban-type people. They like these urban settings. Now, one of the other things that was identified was that the area should remain an important manufacturing location. We don't want to lose that synergy or that, the base of those manufacturing focuses out there. Finally, one of the other items that the stakeholders identified was that housing supply and affordability in particular is a real challenge for their local employees. And basically, what they identified is that a lot of the employees can't really afford the, the type of housing that we're providing within close proximity of the, the Regional Growth Center. This is kind of a screenshot of the public engagement projects. One of the things that was really exciting about this is we had 65 comments on that. And you'll think, well, that may not be that huge. That is really big. And if you'll notice on this little diagram to the right, you look at how many people identify themselves as a Canyon Park resident or a Canyon Park employee. We got really tremendous input from those folks. So, this was a really valuable tool that helped us kind of identify what were some of the important things within this area. Number one, transportation. Now, this is an interesting map because it kind of shows where people journey to and from to get to work. And this is basically where people within the Canyon Park area go home at night. And if you look at this area, Canyon Park is right here, you can see there is a very significant number of folks who live just north of the park. And that's going to come into play in a little bit here. But also, we have people from all over the region. You see all these little individual dots. There's lots of people from all over the place come to work for, to the Canyon Park. And that's because it's such an incredible manufacturing facility. And we have really top-notch employees who have to come a long way sometimes. And that comes into play because the transportation includes, in the future, a number of really important things. And of course, our main commute activity is going to be bus rapid transit. And we have a number of really important bus rapid transit facilities that are coming online here. One, of course, is Swift 2, that's from Commute Transit. That extends from Boeing all the way down to Canyon Park. That's basically a bus coming by every 10 minutes that comes up and down this area. And that comes into play because where a lot of these people, they're right along that 527 corridor. So, that's a really key feature that we're really excited about because it's going to really provide an opportunity for folks to go up and down that north-south commute. The other one, of course, and you've received a couple presentations on this, of course, is the bus rapid transit from Sound Transit number three. Basically, that's the idea of along the Interstate 405 corridor, there'll be a lot of movement up and north and south. Of course, as well, we'll have the 522 bus rapid transit. And of course, this has got a little bit of a long timeframe, but you know, it is one of the things that we are relying upon to provide good commute transit for our employees within this area. Finally, and this is a very exciting project, this is, of course, the Washington State Department of Transportation's vision of what will happen there at that interchange of 17th Avenue Southeast and the, the express toll lanes. And essentially, what this is, this is, trades directly right into the Regional Growth Center, this, this roadway. And this is kind of along, modeled along the lines of what you see in Northeast Sixth Street in Bellevue, basically where the ELT lanes or the bus, the, the, the express toll lanes come up, and then you go to the, you know, basically one side in this case, toward the north, to basically access in and out. And it also drops it right into the park and ride lot. So, this is a really key feature that we want to make sure that we continue to support WashDOT in their achievement of getting this. And of course, they're in the design and engineering stage right now. So, this one is, has got some good synergy behind it, just to meet some money, of course. Now, here's what the preliminary vision for the Canyon Park is. One, of course, it has to be an economic driver. It's a regional business hub for life sciences and biomedical industries. The second is that we need to make this into a multifaceted neighborhood. And that means a diverse mix of housing, office, retail, public open space that serves Bothell, and of course, the rest of the region. Finally, connection to the natural environment. That is a really strong amenity that we want to take advantage of. And one of the things that's really important here is that we want to make sure people understand how important it is to have that natural environment as part of this whole effort. That includes urban wetlands, creeks, interconnected trails, there's a lot of trails within this area. That's a big one. The final thing that's really important is that we want to make sure this becomes a transportation hub. That interchange and that, basically, that, you know, from the express toll lanes is going to be working really well with our transit partners. Basically, the idea is that there's going to be a lot of boardings on and up within that area. In fact, one of the things that was interesting is we had a discussion with Commute Transit and Sound Transit about the boardings that are happening right there at the parking right. And there's about 2,200 boardings a day occurring right there. So, it's already operating as a little bit of a transportation hub. So, this is a really important feature that we want to make sure and embrace within the Canyon Park area. Now, that results in some maps. And whenever we start doing maps, everybody says, oh, well, I don't know about that. But essentially, what this is, this kind of shows where all of these things, all these different elements come together. And essentially, what you have is you have a couple of areas that we're kind of looking at as far as focusing on. One is mixed-use opportunity zones, and those are the kind of the pinkish areas here, here, and here. And we have a little bit of a secondary mix in case we run into a capacity issue as well. And of course, we have business park zones where it makes the most sense to really keep that business park, manufacturing, employment center intact and, and don't, not try and make changes, too many changes there. And of course, that's both on the east side of 52, the Bothell Everett Highway and the west side of the Bothell Everett Highway. Of course, this is where Phillips and Juneau are located right here. And another important mixed-use opportunity zone is this area down here just south of Interstate 405. One of the things about it is that the WashDOT project is kind of a first phase to go to the north, but eventually, it may come to the south. And that would make a great type of a TOD, type of a project in this location. So, you can see how we've got most of the mixed-use areas in conjunction with the areas that we're going to basically have with that bus rapid transit. That makes the most sense, that quarter-mile walking distance. That's really a key factor there that we want to maintain. You get a bit, a little bit further away, that's where you have the core of your business park area. So, that's, that's one of the things that we've identified here. We've also identified some key activity nodes. And this is not necessarily as critical as the first map, but it actually identifies, okay, number A is the areas where, where it makes the most sense to have that, those mixed-use areas. And of course, this is 220th and the Bothell Everett Highway. That's a natural location for that type of a development. And of course, we get a little bit further away, we have a little bit less activity node. And of course, we get a little bit further away, we have a little bit less activity node extensions. And then we've got some, you know, some open space areas that we want to make sure we take advantage of. Some possibilities for some passive recreation, again, trails and things of that nature. And there's, one of the things that we're wanting to kind of explore in our next phase, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, is potential future connections to the north. And those are always tough things to start talking about because, you know, we do have to, you know, consider that they're expensive and really costly. But because we have such a strong connection to the north of the people who work in the park, we need to come up with some way to improve that connection. It may not be here, we may have another location we want to look at, but that would be something that we want to explore a little bit. So finally, on this one, I want to identify that Snoamish County has a pretty robust urban center designation where they allow quite a bit of density and residential density just north of our city limits. This is Malpity Road. And we're thinking that maybe there should be a way to reach across the border, if you would, and work with Snoamish County on maybe making the Regional Growth Center maybe a little bit larger. Or maybe do some adjustments for that. As far as urban design concepts, nothing really unusual here. Basically, the idea is that wide sidewalk, good pedestrian connection, bike facilities, you know, mid-rise, mid-rise-type facilities. But you can see, this, of course, is right now, this is, North Creek goes basically east and west here, or, I'm sorry, left and right here. And you can see that there's not very good connection. We need to make really good use of those really awesome amenities. That's a really key thing. So the idea is to be, put a bright sidewalk in here to make it so that people can go across that and really kind of participate in that open space area. And of course, you know, we're talking about the usual things like sidewalk cafes and things like that. That's not really unusual, but it would be a really great opportunity to have those within this area. And of course, this just kind of extends the concept again, expanding the sidewalks, making that, that interaction with the natural area a little bit better. And we've got some pretty good case studies around the area, region, that we can kind of look at. Some of these are within Seattle. Some of them are within South Seattle. This is a really classic one. Some of them are right here. So these are all part of the things that have come together with this, basically, this vision document. Now, I will warn you that we have released some vision document concepts to the stakeholders. We were having some problems scheduled in the last meeting because, you know, everybody's got a really busy schedule, particularly these folks. And so what we're doing, we're doing a, basically, a PDF. They can provide us comments and we'll have this finished up. Basically, we want to make sure the stakeholders are on board with what we're showing here. And I will conclude with that and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blackburn, Mr. Councilman McNeil?
Thank you for the presentation.
You bet.
Can you tell us what type of growth center we're going after?
Well, that's a good question because as Mayor Ream can identify, there's some discussion about the new terminology for a growth center. There's going to be manufacturing industrial centers, there's going to be basically urban centers. We're kind of probably going to be in the urban center segment. We probably don't have enough area or enough manufacturing facilities to justify being a manufacturing industrial center.
Okay, so that was, part of my next question was, what does it actually take to become a manufacturing growth center?
Yeah, and most of those are, you're talking about the really heavy-duty industries, you know, things like around Bemerton, some down, and some along the lanes in the areas in Seattle. Those are really major manufacturing facilities. I don't think we have quite that enough, even though it's a very impressive number, four or five thousand individuals. I think they want more heavy-duty type of manufacturing processes.
Okay, and you mentioned ten thousand, we currently have ten thousand jobs in that area. What is the estimated, I guess you'd call it, development for residential?
Right now, our residential capacity is forty-four hundred people. And that might be impacted as we go through this, this process. In fact, that's going to be one of the things that's going to be a real balancing we're going to have to try and follow. Because we have about a two-thousand-person surplus in Snoamish County. And we don't want to get really close to that number. A little bit of surplus is a really good thing in case we have something we want to do differently. But we will have to do that as a very careful and really crafted opportunity to, basically, when we plan those mixed-use areas, we want to make sure we make, meet our capacity requirements.
Okay, a lot of, in a lot of committees right now, we're learning a little bit more about this twenty-fifty coming versus the twenty-forty and the million-eighth that's added on top.
Yes.
And we're learning that it's, how that's going to be spread throughout the different counties, not just one specific county, but several counties. So we are taking that into consideration?
Well, in fact, that's going to be one of the things we have to take into consideration. Because whatever comes out of that process, we may be looking at an increased capacity numbers that we have to accommodate.
And when we, when we're looking at, we're looking at continuing our business in that area, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
One of the things that I recently learned is that a lot of businesses is attracted by the, what you call, open space, active space. I recently learned that Google partnered with the school district of Lake Washington and put in a sports field at one of the elementary schools so that they had a place for their employees to go during the day and play, get out, and be active. So are we, are we making sure that those, those open spaces, active spaces will work and attract some of those businesses?
Well, see, that's going to be one of the real challenges because most of those big open areas are actually wetlands or those type of buffers or something like that. In fact, it was interesting because when we first started this, there was a really big open grass field out there just north of two-twenty-eighth Street. And the first thing the consultant identified is, oh, here's our active recreation area. It's basically about eighty percent covered by a wetland. So that's going to be a challenge finding those areas. We want to make sure that we do something like that. And that'll be one of the things that we, when we get into the next phase, when we actually start doing the kind of the block-by-block analysis, you can actually say, okay, this piece of property may not have as much territory as it needs. Maybe we can do some type of an open area or something like that within that. And that's going to be something that we're going to have to look at very carefully. But you're absolutely right. We need to provide that as an amenity for these employees.
Okay, and then the last question, you had talked a little bit about, can you show the map again where you showed, going up a little bit into Snoamish County there? So if we were, if we were to include that in our projections, does that give us a higher yield? Or what would be the purpose of doing that?
A little of both. Basically, the idea behind it was get us, because that area, right now, Snoamish County is projecting is a pretty heavy-duty population capacity, as well as unemployment capacity. You know, it's basically mixed-use. So the concept there would, that might assist us in meeting our planned activity units.
Okay, and I guess, just a comment, the last comment I would make is, as we plan this regional growth center, I think it's an amazing thing. In a lot of the transportation committees, having this regional growth center within our city is a huge thing for us. Because it allows us to get a lot of the projects for transportation to come to our city. But I also want to make sure that we're always, also continuing to look at ways to connect the north part of our community to the southern part of our community, to our downtown.
Yes.
Through that same connection.
And you know, that's, that's a really good comment. Because the initial vision for assigning this area as a regional growth center, and that was back in nineteen ninety-six, was that there would be future transportation, basically, we'll call it just dollars, that would be provided here. And that hasn't quite happened as much as we would like, but I think that's starting to happen, particularly with our, our better work on regional committees.
Deputy Mayor?
I have so many things to add on to Council McNeil's comments. First of all, it's an excellent presentation. I know it's excellent because it's the second time I saw it and I still enjoyed it. I wanted to add on to what Councilmember McNeil said. And I believe this is one of two currently, regional growth centers in Snoamish County, is that correct?
Yes, the other one is within Landway.
So when I was at SCIT last week, I thought it was really interesting because Arlington, they were discussing, Snoamish County was discussing which projects, which transportation projects it was supporting for, you know, regional dollars. And Arlington said, but whoa, whoa, what about us? And they said, you're not a regional growth center. But what was also interesting and really plays into this Canyon Park master plan is that they're supporting two projects in Bothell. One is the extension of North Creek Trail, Phase Four? Is it Four?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so that plays perfectly into this. And the second thing that I thought was really interesting is they're actually supporting the widening of five-two-seven in King County, Snoamish County is. Because it plays, I mean, because it's a direct link into Snoamish County. And so I thought that was fantastic. And the reason they said they were doing it was because we frankly couldn't compete in King County for those dollars. So sometimes it's a blessing to be in two counties. I also wanted to support what Councilmember McNeil said about sports fields. And I don't know if he was aware of this, but the alternative high school for North Shore School District is in that business park.
It is, that's right. It is, yes.
And they don't have a sports field.
They don't, that's.
They don't have any recreational space there. So, right back at you. Let's see if I had any other notes. Oh, and then regarding the Canyon Park, the direct access ramp, I believe that's Phase One B, am I correct?
Oh, yeah, it's something like that.
So, I mean, that's like twenty, thirty, or later currently.
But if I may add to that, and I think that this is important, is because that direct access ramp is really critical to Sound Transit Three. And their interaction between this area, as well as, of course, their, the bus, the express toll lane, so.
I agree, if you want me to do some advocating, just point me in the right direction.
Really good idea for the council to identify.
So far, we sped up Phase One A by three years, so.
And I, but again, I keep emphasizing that, you know, we have a lot of transportation partners, I like to call them. It's Snow County and King County and, of course, all of us in, of course, City of Bothell as well. And the synergy I'm detecting when I go to some of these meetings with the, with the other members is that there's a lot of interest in making sure that that Sound Transit Three happens. And the bus rapid transit is our, is our, is our thing, I guess you would call it, for, particularly for commute. And I think that we have some really good businesses out there that are going to be very supportive of that action. And particularly that, that, the off-ramp, you'll call it, from WashDOT to be happening sooner than, rather than later.
Yeah, and I have to thank you for teeing up some of those businesses for my cold call.
That's what we do.
It was great, it's a great presentation. I'm really excited and I, I can't wait to see where it goes from here. We just need to fund it. Thanks.
Councilmember Zorn?
This is just a little rabbit trail off of this. Because we talk about drawing north, folks in North Bothell down to South Bothell and people from the southern part of Bothell up to North Bothell. And I will confess that I have a little bit of, what do they call it? The Kenmore Hanger envy. And I sit there and I think, we've got plenty of, you know, get outside, get sun, get rain down in this part of Bothell. But might there be a place to put and a covered open place that's kind of along the lines of the hangar up there and at that part of Bothell to drop people up there for community activities?
You know, it's really interesting you say that because the public engagement portion, we got some really interesting comments. We actually had three comments from people saying, what about a community center up here? Or some type of a center like that so that we can have someplace for us to go? And I presume they were talking about Canyon Park residents, to enjoy whatever happens to be some activities. So that was a really interesting comment that we received, and we got three of those comments. So I think that there is some room for us to have that discussion.
Anybody else with questions?
So I had a question about the, so the Sound Transit Bus Park, can we make that off-ramp? I hear cringing. They came last week, don't worry. It was already said in the public. Um, can we make that a permit requirement or a requirement of their development?
That's going quite a ways right there. You know, and again, it is, it is something that we're going to have to talk about. And I think that one of the things that is identified is that the Owners Association is monitoring that very closely, as well as the businesses are monitoring that very closely. Again, because they see that area up here as business. They want to have more businesses. In fact, some of them are saying, look, we have a need for expansion and we may have to build some more buildings. So it is, it is a topic that we're going to have to have a really frank discussion with Sound Transit about. And, you know, it's just going to be one of those things that we just have to have that discussion. Now, the other flip side is that that could bring some really important, necessary improvements to the area. So these are all things that we're going to have to talk about as we get into this a little bit more in detail.
Yeah, because all the four-oh-five bus rapid transit buses being on two-twenty-eighth every six minutes and Bothell-Everett highways, that's not going to be good if they don't have that thing. I think that's a fantastic-looking project that could help a lot if that's where, if they end up putting it in Canyon Park. One thing, and I'm sure you guys are all over this, but one thing I've noticed about this business park, it just seems like it's kind of hardened off from the rest of the area. Like you drive past it and you kind of don't even know it's in there. It's kind of hidden behind things. And is it, is that part of the visioning is to kind of, I don't know, open it up a little bit so people can actually see, see in there and see that it's like a welcoming place? Because right now, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a place where you pull in there to go check out stuff or.
You know, that, that's a really good point. Because one of the items that the urban design folks in BBJ identified was that they, this is, of course, North Creek. And it's a natural growth corridor. It's really heavily vegetated. The only real intrusions into that is on two-twentieth and two-hundred-fourteenth Street. And that's why they're identifying, look, we need to make that more welcoming. We need to have those type of sidewalks that go across those bridges so people can, you know, have that little glimpse in there. That's also one of the reasons why the, the concept of this area right next to the Bothell-Everett Highway is identified is probably the primary area for mixed-use. Because it is right next to the highway, it's very visible and some of those things that happen. And what you identified was, was critical. Because when we first started this, we really didn't have a really good feel for what we had. And I, I mean, we knew, oh, yeah, there's a big business park, yeah, it's got some great employees, employers. We didn't have a full understanding because it is kind of a little bit segregated from the area. So those are all things that are going to be real challenging because of this natural feature, which is a both an amenity and it also has a little bit of a screening effect, too.
And then, when we changed the zoning in this, in the business park to RACOP, I think it was?
Yes.
The, the business owners, and I think there's just one, or there's a group of them that are, there's just kind of one, not business, I'm sorry, property owner.
Oh, property owners, yes, that's a good one.
And they sent us a not-so-happy letter when we were going to rezone it and said, you know, we don't want housing here, period. Have they changed their position on that?
I think that with, and again, one of the things is we have representative, representatives of the two major landowners on the Stakeholder Committee. And their attitude is starting to change. I think they are going to be more welcoming to our residential component here. And I think that that's one of the things that we're going to, you know, I just really get excited about the stakeholder thing. Because we've got a great group of folks and we're having this really open dialogue. And those are those kind of questions that we're actually having good discussions with the Owners Association representatives about. And I think that they are starting to say, you know, there is some value to a residential component. Because they see what's happening at Downtown or Bisley Village and some of the other locations within the region where they've got this really great working group and residential. And it's really functioning quite well for them. And I think that they're, they are getting more welcoming and more, more interested in the concept of residential. So they may change their CCNRs, as basically what they say.
Oh, that's right, it was in their CCNRs. I forgot about that part. Well, that's good to hear. I guess I would want to know, it would be nice if we got a letter from the same whoever sent that last letter before we, you know, double down with nine-hundred thousand more dollars to keep, keep going if they're kind of where they're at. You know, are they, are they going to change their CCNRs? Are they opening up to this concept and are they going to allow it to happen, basically?
Well, I think, and I think what we can do is that, one of the things that's going to be interesting is that they're going to be providing us some comments on this last, the final visioning product. And we just sent that email out today, as a matter of fact. We want your comments. And I actually have spoken with a representative of the Owners Association who will be primarily, who will be probably the primary author of that. And he is going to make, be providing those documents, those, those comments. And I'm more than willing to say, hey, it'd be great if we can have some, you know, comfort level, I will say, that, that the possibility of residential is something that you're willing to look at.
That'd be awesome.
Yes.
And then just last thing, I really appreciate the, having a stakeholder process. I just, I've seen the day and night difference. And when you have that occur and you get people together and they have commitment and they're, they're doing their, you just get a really good product. And I appreciate that the staff had the visioning and, you know, the thought process to do that. Because I think it's a, it's a good way to go instead of just open houses and you hope people show up for a cookie and some juice and.
And actually, I will say that the open house we held, I'll, I'll just be blatantly honest here. I was really nervous because I hadn't really heard much from the community about it. And we had a great open house. So, yeah, it's been a really good process of engagement we've been experiencing here. So I'm hoping that we can. So I'm hoping that we can continue this and do whatever future phase we do.
Yeah, that'd be great. Alright, well, thank you. There's no action on this item. Is there any other questions or comments? Alright, we're moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. And let's see, where are we at? Everybody doing okay? We don't need a break? Everybody's okay? Alright. Excuse me, are you not okay? We've got one last agenda item. It's a doozy, though. You, you gonna be okay? Alright. AB 18-043, Public Meeting to Discuss Proposed Plan and Code Amendments, which together comprise the 2018 Docket in Initiation of Formal Consideration as Warranted. And we have the Acting Community Development Director, Gary Hassler.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the 2018 Docket of Plan and Code Amendments. So the first question we always get asked is, what is the docket? What is a docket? We always refer to this thing as the docket, but a lot of people really don't know what it is, so I thought I'd start off with that. The docket is the annual City Council review of proposed plan and code amendments and related proposed actions. So, council decides which items on this docket warrant formal initiation and the process path for each. Typically, that process path is either referring to the Planning Commission or another board or retention by the council for direct consideration. Most of the items, as you know, historically go to the Planning Commission or Shoreline or Landmark Board, but council does occasionally decide to keep some items for direct consideration. And then finally, the last thing we ask you to do on the docket typically is to try and prioritize the items that you've initiated. And that's the really hard part of this exercise every year is the prioritization. So what are the objectives for this evening? First of all, receive this staff presentation, so we're, we're on a good start. And then, if desired, take public comment on the 2018 docket. This is a public meeting. You're not required to take public testimony, but in the past councils have been open to getting public input. And then ask staff questions and council deliberations. And finally, we ask you to take action on the 2018 docket. And as noted in the last slide, that action includes initiating any new plan, hand or code amendments, assigning or modifying priorities to meet your objectives, and identifying the process path for each initiated item. And finally, you'll notice that in the Attachment 1, in the matrix that we've given you, there are previous docket items on there that have been initiated by past councils but haven't had a chance yet to be worked on. We ask you typically each year to either reaffirm those items and keep them on the docket, or if they're no longer germane or, or something you wish to pursue, we ask you to remove them. So what is on the docket this year? Attachment 1 is essentially the entire docket that you have in your packet. There are 16 potential items on there. Each item is assigned a number so that it's easily identified. It's much easier to say we're talking about number three than the full title of whatever it is. It contains a description of the potential plan and/or code amendment. It identifies the body who requested the amendment. You'll notice that a lot of them are identified as a staff request. That simply means that we bring forward everything that we've collected over the past year, either through council workshops or council retreat or Planning Commission, public hearings, council public hearings, things we hear from third parties, and we all, we lump them all under one big umbrella as a staff request. They're not really necessarily staff requesting the, the item. The docket also provides a short analysis of each item. It may have a staff recommendation. We don't always provide one, but most of them do. And then finally, the docket categorizes whether the, each item is mandatory or it supports a council goal, or it's an optional or council preference item. In addition, those items have been, those categories have been further broken down. So, as I mentioned before, some items have been initiated from previous dockets but haven't been addressed yet. Some items have been addressed from previous dockets and have been partially committed, completed. There are a couple items on the docket that have been heard by the Planning Commission but not the council. And finally, the bulk of the, the docket is new items that have not yet been initiated by council. The way we, we tried to set up priorities this year for you is as follows. First of all, the docket contains a certain number of mandatory items. These are items that have to be completed in 2018 or 19 due to federal, state, court decision or other mandates. Second priority we, we identified was the item supports a council goal. The city manager went through your council goals recently this evening, and we've tried to identify those potential plan and code amendment or docket items that directly support one of those goals. So we, we figured, we, we thought that was a high priority for you. And then there are the optional council preference items, which is the rest of the docket. Some of those we recommend trying to work on in 2018. Others, we recommend can be held off till 2019. And finally, the last priority is items that council believes can, does not, do not have to be initiated this year but could be deferred for consideration on a future docket, whether, whether next year or further down the road. I think council is, is certainly aware of staff resources throughout the city and, and within community development as a department. I wanted to have a, just a brief discussion about staff resources so that you know where staff is coming from when we try to recommend a priority to you. It's not that we, we don't want to work on a particular item or we want to kick the can down the road. We're trying to line up the mandatory items and council goal items with the staff resources we have in-house to make sure that we can tackle those items in 2018. And then we're trying to identify where the surplus capacity is so that you can initiate additional items that we think we have the capacity for. This chart was sort of illuminating for staff. We, we really hadn't, we knew that we, we have staff resource challenges in long-range planning. And for those of you who may not know, long-range planning is the division within community development that primarily works on docket items, that works on processing plan and code amendments. So, we pulled this together for some historical context and, and the numbers really jumped out of this, and I think they'll probably jump out at you, too. If you go back as far as 1990 and look at what the long-range planning division looked like at that time, we had four full-time employees working on plan and code amendments, comprehensive planning items. At that time, the city population was just 12,000. Over the years, that number of full-time employees in the division has, has gone from four to three to two and a half, and most recently, in September of 2016, to just two senior planners, and that's Bruce and Dave who are with us here tonight. And now we have a population of 43,000, almost 44,000. So, just looking at this chart, it's very easy to see that when we say we're resource challenged, we, we really mean it and we're, we're not just trying to, to play a violin. So this little graphic is just, hopefully will illustrate to you what plan and code amendments looked like to staff. This is the tip of an iceberg, and it's typically what I think the public or perhaps City Council sees of most plan and code amendments. And it's usually the end process. But this is really how staff use them because of the work that goes into them on the front end. I just thought it was a, a fun graphic to, to play in on the staff resource discussion. We pulled this chart together, thinking about the two full-time employees that we have in the division. We believe that we have about 2,200 total staff work hours available. So we're taking out things like public holidays and vacation time and, and other work that staff has to work on and, and training and conferences and all those non-work items. And what's left over, we think, is about 2,200 staff hours in long-range planning. The entire docket tonight that we've, that we're going to present consists of about 3,400 staff hours in our estimate of work. We've tried to break down the, the priorities for you in terms of staff hours, and you can see them there. Mandatory items, we estimated about 450 hours, and you can, you can see how the other priority items break out. So the, the obvious takeaway from this bar graph is that we don't have the staff capacity at present to work on every docket item that's on the docket tonight in 2018. So let's get into the docket just a little bit in itself. In your packet, we provided Attachment 1, which is the matrix, and that's the, that's the table. And I, I think it's, that, that the table is also blue in your packet. Is that correct? All the, the blue tables in that whole Attachment 1? This, this next few slides I'm gonna show summarize that, that attachment that you have. The recommended docket contains three mandatory and two council support goals, so these are the two highest priorities. Under the mandatory items are an update of the Shoreline Master Program, critical areas, ordinance, code amendments that are mandated by federal requirements, and small cell wireless communication facilities, which our code does not currently address and which are, which are something that we're looking at right now. There's a need to have regulations in place to process those this year. The council support goal items we've identified are the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, which Bruce has just given you an update of the first phase, the visioning phase. This would be for the second phase, which involves subarea plan and code amendments. And as you know, we've asked for state funding, I think totaling about $700,000 to help with this phase. We don't know yet whether we'll get up any portion or all of that funding. So this item is heavily dependent upon the funding portion. Is Jennifer looking at me? Okay. I was looking at council and they looked like they were looking at Jennifer, so. Another council support goal item is the Housing Strategy Plan Update, and along with that, Affordable Housing Plan and Code Amendments. This is an item that we, we have heard from council in the past as a, is a high priority, and it certainly supports one or more council goals. And so we, we believe that's a high priority item as well for 2018. Next week, in fact, you'll have a presentation from a regional coalition for housing on, they call it Housing 101 to give you some background information and data on affordable housing, as well as a study session on the housing strategy. Got some, some filler vision, vision, vision stuff here for you. The optional items that are in the docket that we believe we could probably tackle this year include a continuation of Development Services Initiative items. Those are development review-related items that came out of the lean process that, that staff undertook this year. We have, we've already done a lot of administrative changes to the review process based on that lean process. But there are some code amendments that, that we think would really help streamline and, and make the review process more efficient. And so we're proposing to continue that work. We, we feel that staff is vested enough in that lean process that we want to keep the momentum going and, and not kill that project because of staff resources. And you can see the, the items there, the six items in there that comprise that. Item seven is the downtown town subarea regulations and amendments. We feel that we have the staff capacity to work on those this year. And this is just a, a graphic to illustrate some of that. And then optional council preference items that we recommend for 2019 comprise historic district regulations and reports for demolition, essentially making landmark preservation Title 22 in the code more readable and easier to work with for both staff and outside persons. Definition for residential care facilities, signed code amendments based on a Supreme Court decision that we're already a couple of years behind in coming in line with, but, but we, we feel that our signed code, as we're interpreting it now, is defensible. However, at some point in the near future, probably, hopefully 2019, we do need to make code amendments to, to fully come into compliance with that, that Supreme Court decision. Some minor amendments to address language in our adult entertainment code amendments, requirements. And then the Nike Hill and Shelton View and Queensborough Plan and Code Amendments and South Riverside Drive Plan and Code Amendments. And when we get into council deliberations, Bruce and Dave can talk more about all of these items. Again, some, some graphics that we may refer to later. Continuing the council preference items that we, we feel would best be tackled in 2019 would be a comprehensive review of the city's landscape regulations. If you recall, last year, we, council adopted some interim tree retention regulations. And when we did those, we said, you know, our landscape regulations as a whole are a little outdated. It would be good to revisit those and bring them more in line with the interim regulations that we, that you adopted. We still feel we need to do that, but we don't feel that it's a time-sensitive issue for this year. A potential policy issue for council is the issue of safe injection sites that some communities are considering. The way that the Bothell Municipal Code is currently written, our interpretation is that safe injection sites would not be permitted based on a code interpretation. However, council could choose to make it explicit in the code whether they are or are not permitted and make it very explicit. Again, the, the current stance is that a code interpretation would say that they're not allowed. We feel that this is something that unless council feels differently is probably not super time-sensitive. And the final is a design review board. And it's an item that I know you're gonna get into discussion on tonight. We're, we're happy, looking forward to that discussion with you. We can have that. So first of all, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that council might have. Public comment if council desires to, to take it. And then finally, council deliberation in action. And Mayor, the way we've done this in the past, as you know, is probably the, the easiest way to do it and the way that, that keeps everything straight is to literally go through Attachment 1, item by item, items one through 16. If you want to start doing that with council questions and deliberations or have questions and deliberations first, and then we can go through the items, that, that's your choice. But I would recommend when it comes to actually looking at the docket items that we go through one by one. And what we're asking for tonight as far as council action is we need a council motion to initiate all of the docket items that you wish to pursue in 2018 and any other actions you decide, any other direction you decide to give staff. So, in other words, we'll take note of which items you, you want to hold off until 2019, which items you want to take off the docket entirely, whatever your decision is. And all that will be covered by the, the one initiation action. With that, I'll throw it over to you, and Dave Boyd and Bruce Blackburn are with us. If you have specific questions about any of the docket items themselves, I'm probably gonna turn it over to them. I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have about staff resources or workload.
So I did want to start there, but, so if council's okay, what I'd like to do is just go line or item by item down the list, if, if everybody's okay with that. Just, it gets crazy otherwise if we, if we do anything different. I've done this enough times to.
It does.
Cringe when I see it on the agenda. But I think it's really enlightening that we have two senior planners, where we used to have five and serve less than half the population. So, and we heard earlier today about the volunteer coordinator, and we keep hearing, I think, just about every council meeting that we need to be very careful about hiring additional staff and we need to be very careful about money we spend, especially if, in the event that the public safety levy doesn't pass, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions. So, I would just, at least from my, from where I'm sitting, I just kind of want the council to know I have no desire to increase the amount of staff right now for 2018, perhaps for 2019. But my, my stance right now is that we, we need to live within our means with the staff we have. And luckily, they're two senior seasoned staff that can handle a lot. It looks like some of these hour estimates seem, seem a little low for some of these, but I, I'm sure they can get it done. But, so, that's all I just had for opening comments. Does anybody else have additional opening comments that are, we ready to dive in? Ready to dive in? Okay. Oh, is there, is there anybody in the public that would like to provide a public comment? We don't have a sign-up sheet or anything. This is kind of special. No? There's just two of you, or three. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, come up here. State your name for the record, please.
Vicki Sompie, and I'm the, at the moment, the Chair for the Landmark Board. I know our Title 22 issues have come up lately and that some of the language has become outdated due to some, I'm not even sure how to put it because it just came up at the meeting. And I really want to see that rise from being down there around 17 or 18 to enabling us to deal with some of the language contingencies that we didn't know about. So, just want to put in a word for that. Thanks.
No problem. Anybody else like to give a public comment? Mr. Bangbum. Go ahead, come up to the mic, though. City Clerk, please start the timer for Mr. Bangbum.
It's not gonna take that long. I just have a question. In the discussion that we just heard from you and Mr. Blackburn, I never heard anything said about traffic. 527, traffic is horrible. And 228 is not all that great either. I live up there, so I, I know the area, but I know what's going to happen on 527 when, when Country Village goes away. And I don't know, are they, are they going to widen 527 in King County down, downtown Bothell or not? Do you know?
So go ahead and give your public comment and then we'll have staff address your questions.
Okay, so I just, what are you guys doing about the traffic situation? Because I have complained to you guys about that before. About what building new houses are going up. The, the trees and everything's coming down and houses are going in and, and we've still got two lane roads. You can only put so many cars on the roads. So I was wondering what, what, what plans are there for, for traffic control or traffic improvements?
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Hassler, would you like to address how we plan for transportation projects?
I would just like to say that I'd be happy to have an offline conversation with the gentleman. And our comprehensive plan has a transportation element that can cover it much better than I can in, in five minutes here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Are we ready to, we're ready to roll on? Okay. Item. Yep, Deputy Mayor.
I, I, I understand wanting to be concise and go through line by line. However, I have some proposals and so I'm not sure, they kind of mix and match a little bit, so I'm not sure how to handle that. I thought maybe after we get through the mandatory and the council goals, maybe I'd just propose them before we go through, because some of them have to do with things that are all the way to eight, you know, 18 and perhaps we'll go through and by then it's already a done deal. You know what I'm saying?
So there's got to be one of you. Just kidding. All right. So let's start and then when you're ready to start mixing it up, we'll get there. So item number one, which is the Shoreline Master Program periodic update, does anybody, actually, you know what? Let's just make this easy. Items one, two and three, is there? And they're mandatory? Does anybody have any problem with just saying those are in? They're in? All right. Moving right along. Item number four, which is planning code amendments. A men for updating the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, second phase, which involves sub area plan and code amendments. 800 hours. That's a lot of hours.
We recommend that council initiate this item. It may be, we may have to come back to you later and adjust the work program based on funding. The, the amount of funding we might or might not get, but, but certainly we think that it warrants initiating.
Okay. Councilmember McCallum?
So because I can see that it takes 800 hours and also probably half a million dollars. I just wonder if you can phase it better rather than to just, are you going to phase it? Maybe that's the question.
Well, we are phasing it as, as Bruce, this previous presentation presented to you, the results of phase one. This is phase two. This is really the, the meat and potatoes of the, the whole thing. And we, we estimate that this will certainly take the rest of 2018 and a good chunk of 2019. So yes, we, we are phasing it as much as we can. We're trying to also tie it to state budget cycle, so. And consultant dollars that we're getting from some small grants we've received.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So I just wanted to mention, I believe we already know we're not getting any money for the Canyon Park Master Plan from the, the state.
That's good to know.
Well, yes and no.
That's why we were squirreling and looking over at the city manager.
Now that explains it. Thank you.
Okay, so.
We hadn't heard that.
Anybody else want to discuss item number four? Are we comfortable moving it forward as is?
So I, I would say Mayor, we recommend initiating it and then we'll figure out what tasks we can accomplish, given the funding and staffing levels that we have. And one thing we do after you initiate the, the docket is we update the, the matrix with council actions and we'll update it to reflect what we think we can achieve this year.
Mr. Hassler, did you ask me to do a motion on each one? And now that I've just skipping over.
No, I did not.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
That gets cumbersome. We've done it in the past, but the code doesn't require it, so.
Good.
I think as long as we know what your direction is overall, you can do one motion and if we have to, we can go back to the tape and watch it.
Okay. Everybody feel good about item number four as is? You okay? You're okay? You're okay enough? Okay. How are we doing over here? All right. Item number five, review and update of the Housing Strategy Plan and potential planning code amendments for the affordable housing. 150 hours. Oh, with support from Arch. There we go. Okay.
Yes, on this item, we get a considerable amount of staff assistance from Arch, so those hours are, are lower for our staff.
So can you give me kind of a idea of what this is going to look like? Like what, what's the outcome of it?
I'm going to ask Dave to come up and respond to that.
You'll find out next week all of what's in the Housing Strategy Update that is recommended by Planning Commission. But a couple of the key things, one, one item that we've already worked on is developing kind of a foundational section in our code for affordable housing requirements. Whenever we increase the capacity of an area through a rezon or for, through a code amendment. We've had in our comprehensive plan for some time, policies saying that when we do increase capacity, we, we should consider an affordable housing requirement. But so far we've tried tying that to various rezones as they've come through. But one of the recommendations has come back to us and that we've discussed in the Housing Strategy is to, to bring that foundational section forward first so that it's not tied to a specific rezon action. So, so I think we'll be ready to bring that forward to council quite soon. And then potentially, if, if you are interested in initiating them, there are a number, number of rezones that are, that are in the docket and a couple that will be discussed a little bit more in the Housing Strategy Discussion. Rezones and code amendments that would increase capacity and provide the nexus for an affordable housing requirement. A couple of those are within the downtown. One of them's in, in the material for tonight.
And we could get this in place prior to those rezoned considerations?
The idea would be, yeah, to get this in place, the foundational code in place and then apply it to, to each rezon or, or capacity increase, code amendment that increases the capacity as they come up.
So I've, I've heard of something where one of the strategies for affordable housing was to, is it a discount or a full wave of taxes on the property for a certain amount of time? Is that, is that in the hopper or is that?
That is one of the items in the, the Housing Strategy. It's the multifamily tax exemption. And it gives a developer that includes a certain percentage of affordable housing in their project, a tax exemption for 12 years. After that time, the, the exception goes away and the requirement also goes away. But Arch has had good experience working with developers to maintain that affordable housing beyond the 12 year. And, and I'm sure Arthur Sullivan will give more information about that next week.
I've heard that's a really successful tool in other communities. Is there any other questions on this? Councilmember McNeil?
So on that, that taxation, so 10 to 12 years, they, they're eliminated from the tax roll?
I don't know that they're eliminated entirely, but, but there, it is a significant reduction. And again, I'm going to wait for Arthur to answer those detailed questions about that.
Okay, so if we approve to move forward with, this is just 150 hours, but it's, that information is part of the affordable housing element. I'm, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, it's part of the Housing Strategy that we'll be bringing to you next week. And, and, and the lion's share of the work on that actually happened last year. We had, we spent almost a full year with Planning Commission going through focus groups and panel, expert panel discussions and, and public hearings to develop that.
And it sounds like we want to definitely have that in place prior to any rezoning. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well.
If we want to consider.
Yeah.
That as part of it, part of our strategy.
Yes. So the first thing is to approve the Housing Strategy. Then the next thing following immediately on, on the coattails of that would be the code amendment to establish that foundational affordable housing requirement language. That then, then every, each rezon or capacity increase that we approve, then we can apply that affordable housing requirement.
Great. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Hassler, will you remind us when we get to 2,200 hours? Is it 2,200 or 2,000? Do you, do you know where that line in the sand is? One of you?
We'll try to track it.
Okay. Cause I just want somebody to say, okay, that was it. That's the max. And then we'll have some horse trading by the deputy mayor over here after that. Okay. So is there anybody else that has comments on the Affordable Housing Strategy? See none. I didn't look this way. No, they're good. Okay, moving on. So that's in optional. This is where it gets fun. Number six initiated from the previous time, lean process as it is applied to Development Services Initiative. I've been through lean processes before. I would strongly recommend all of these just because it will actually pay off in dividends, making the amendments in the operation of the city. So that's where I stand. Deputy Mayor?
So this is where the horse trading begins. I had a, a conversation with Mr. Blackburn today. Jean and I have both talked about, and so I, I need to, I guess, find out how council feels. Number seven talks about some downtown regulations. I wanted to add to that. I've gotten a lot of comments about how people are unhappy with not really having, I guess, adequate design standards in the downtown core. And I had some thoughts about revisiting some things, if there were some easy fixes that we might do. And apparently Mr. Blackburn has a few in mind. But things related to possibly visiting color and material setbacks as we go up. Cause I've, I've heard a lot about the canyon effect, especially in Main Street. And also my understanding with the Co-op building was that there was going to be retail and/or public space and there isn't. And when I asked why, because I was concerned that you're kind of killing pedestrian activity going up the street or pedestrian engagement with the development. It wasn't required and so we don't have any. There's no coffee shop. There's no park. There's nothing in that very long facade. And so these are some of the things that I was interested in possibly adding to number seven. So when I talked to Mr. Blackburn this morning, I asked him which of number six, first of all, how, how many hours does he think it would take and which of those from the lean process might be removed? Do you mind sharing? So that it's not just me saying all this. So first it was, we talked about the possibility of, of doing the downtown regs. And second, how many hours? And third, which of these items might be deferred to 2019 in order to fit that in?
And one of the issues was, I'm not exactly sure what the scope of the downtown plan, so it's kind of hard to.
I understand. I do.
But I, I do recall, we did talk about some of the lean processes and the one process that we could conceivably defer would be to the B, which is, you know, the, the short plat, go from four to nine. Basically, that's something that you could defer in 2019. In fact, I think that's actually what our recommendation is. The situation is that most of these others are, are, as I, as Mayor Ream identified, these are investments in future efficiencies. And particularly the Title 20 amendments, those are amendments that we really need to take. I would be very hesitant on removing anything other than number B in here.
Could you also kind of, we, we talked briefly about the scope of maybe some design standards. And I think you had said it would take between 150 and 300 hours. Am I remembering correctly?
Well, and that was just.
A guess. That's a ballpark. Right, right, right.
Well, it depends, but.
A minimum of 150 hours.
I think you better have 150 to 300 hours budgeted for that type of a work.
Okay. So anyway, that was my proposal, but so first I need to know if anyone else, who else might be interested in looking at the design standards. I, my thought was we initially had talked about a design review board. And as I was reading the docket, it seemed kind of insurmountable to do that anytime in the next couple of years, because it's a really heavy lift. And so what I, I'm trying to look for is opportunities to make incremental improvements rather than going the full, the, the full weight of the, the, having a new board and all that. And so this was one of my thoughts.
So Mr. Hassler, if I'm doing math correctly, which it might not be, but hopefully I am. If we take B out, it's 1,950 hours if we do one through six minus item B and number six.
Okay.
What was the grand total of available staff hours?
2,200.
Oh, okay. You guys got time then? Okay. So for item number six then, does council feel that we should move item number six forward minus item B? Yeah. Yes? Okay. So that leaves us at having, well, let's see, 250 hours remaining. So, and then we can talk, and then you want us to discuss the things that aren't going to be addressed in 2018, I would imagine, right?
Yes, I think there's, there's, there's use to going through all of the items on the matrix and at least having a council recognition of them.
Okay. So, or do you have a question on six or do you want to move on to seven? Oh, there's an overall question. Councilmember McNeil?
So when we're listing the hours and we're talking about these hours, are these, in the past, historically, have you met these hours? Or do you typically, as most of us do, go over the hours that we allot to do our work?
No, these are, these are estimates that we came up with for what similar type tasks have taken us to do in the past. So these would be our estimates of what it would take to get each of these items done.
So there.
So we would expect to meet them.
So, but there is a, a potential that you could go over on some items?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, they're estimates.
Or under.
Or under.
Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like council was comfortable with item six minus B, so we're on number seven. I guess at this point, we should look at seven and eight together and talk about, because you, we've got 150 hours remaining. And there's 200 hours of stuff.
And since you received some testimony on item eight, I had a quick comment. We do have a, a historic preservation consultant who works for us 10 hours a week. And Sarah would provide quite a bit of that 100 hour estimate for that item. So I, I think we can tackle that Title 22 landmark preservation item in 2018.
Oh, so you're saying you can do seven and eight as well? So that, that take it, well, it's 2250, but you think.
Yeah, we didn't include Sarah in the 2,200, so I, I don't know off the top of my head how much time she could, of her 10 hours she could supply each week to work on code amendments, but we, we can safely assume that we're, we're something just over 2,200.
Okay.
And that's a, not a large item, so.
Deputy Mayor?
More horse trading. So since we're already looking at Title 22 and I, I, you know, as I said, I was looking for incremental ways to improve design without doing a design review board. I have another proposal and that is currently as the Landmark Board now exists, they do serve an advisory capacity in the downtown special regulation area and they already do review of buildings. My, and I'm sure Liam's experience in the past is that it's kind of hit or miss when it happens. And I know we've had great success when it happens early enough and we've had disappointment when it hasn't. For instance, the City Hall building came to us quite late in the construction document process. And while the architect was very enthusiastic about our, our input, they said it's too late. And so my proposal would be, if we're already touching on Title 22, could we possibly add in there codify? When the Landmark Board gets to review these drawings so that it's a meaningful review? I understand it's advisory, but I think, you know, I think it would add value. And we have two architects on the board, so I, I think that they would provide not just architectural value, but also contextual in terms of Bothell and what, what Bothell is looking for and, and what context there is in terms of our historic resources and, and kind of how that might inform the design. So that would be, I, I would probably look for something. So that would be, I would probably look for something along, maybe mid-design development review. I'll leave that up to the landmark board. But I think that would, might be an easy fix, and kind of an incremental fix to having the design review board.
Sure. And we try to encourage applicants to go to the landmark preservation board as early in the process as possible. In fact, we would prefer that they go following their pre-application conference with staff, but prior to permit submittal, if possible. The problem for a lot of applicants is they, prior to permit submittal, they don't have enough design pulled together yet to go to landmark board. But I think there's probably, there's probably a point in there that we can, we can codify.
Great, so I guess I just, I need to know if the rest of the council is interested in something like that.
So I have a couple questions to make sure I would be interested in that. One being under item number eight, because we're kind of taking these together. Oh, sorry, item number seven. Does that include looking at the form and feel of the downtown? So I've heard the same thing, like, there's a couple of buildings that have gone up, people don't like the colors, and they don't like the, the volume of it, and they don't like the encroachment, I guess, or feel that it feels like it's encroaching onto the right of way. Is that going to be addressed in the item number seven? Is that something, would that be additive to what kind of you were scoping when you said 100 hours?
Well, that would, that wasn't, isn't included in the 100 hours here, so that would be, that would be additional time. I did want to point out that the, kind of providing some more definition to the design review process that's already spelled out in the historic resources section of the downtown plan, that would probably be a downtown plan amendment more than a Title 22, I think is where, where you would do that. There could be a cross-reference there, but.
Yeah, I think there's something in Title 22 already regarding the review. So.
Yeah.
It's probably both.
The definition of the downtown special review area is in that historic resources section of, of the downtown plan, as well as the process. And there, the process says that the, that advisory review by the landmark preservation board has to happen before issuance of building permits. So we could certainly change that and make it before application for building permits. So that, that's along the lines of what you're, you're suggesting in terms of bolstering the design review process that we have, and landmark preservation's boards' role as a design review board in that area.
So you extended all of branch on, at, piling on the board, the review board. Are you guys also thinking that you could handle kind of evaluating the volumis feel of the downtown buildings and that?
Well, what we've discussed is, and what we would propose is to come back to council for a study session on the downtown development regulations, and, and kind of a check-in on where we are. The planned action environmental impact statement did call for periodic check-ins with council on where we are in meeting those thresholds. So I think this, given that this is coming up, this would be a good time to, to do that in the next two, three months, come back and do that kind of an assessment. And, and out of that, then we could identify areas that either need code amendments, or that need to be implemented differently than we have been. But I think that would be a good approach.
And that's still inside the 2,200, oh, 2,250, I guess, because you upped us a little bit? We still can handle that? I'm just wanting to be very cautious about what we put on your plates.
It would take us some time to prepare for a study session for council, but, but I think what we get back out of that would be, would be much greater return. It's very difficult with a complex issue such as design in the downtown area to try and scope it without getting your feedback and input. So I think if we could hold a study session, even if we have to prepare for it with 50 or 100 staff hours, we'd get more than that back out of it. So that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And while I appreciate your concern, and I've heard some of the same things, that you have, Deputy Mayor, about the concern about some of the design downtown, I believe that we ought to look also at incentives and not just restrictions. And so sometimes you can get a lot out of people just because you incentivize them to maybe do some of the design that you would like to see for the historic district. So that would be part of a work session, I would be. More into that than making some restrictions now. But I would like to have you also look at incentives.
And that's why I made the good comment that a study session would help us with a complex issue, because there's more than one way to get a good design, and it is a complex issue. So rather than us try to guess what you're looking for, and a year from now, find out that you're still unhappy, that doesn't really solve things for, for anybody. So I'm hearing that, it looks like a study session would, would be a good idea for council too.
Yeah. It also looks like we gave you everything that you wrote down for 2018. So again, I just want to make sure.
I think we're there.
We have the capacity to handle this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
So again, I need to comment on the Canyon Park Plan and have a question as well. So when I'm looking at the Canyon Park Plan, it says that you would hire a consultant. And is that one consultant or two consultants that you would need to hire? I see one of them would be 250K, then 350K, some kind of a little.
Well, that's the issue that we now had, need to have an internal discussion about, because that item is so tied to funding. So I think we need to, we need to have a discussion about what the realistic picture looks like for funding, and determine what we can actually accomplish this year and 2019.
And I think that's very important, because you're talking about 800 staff hours and hiring consultants when there's no money there.
Yes, absolutely. And obviously, not being able to hire a consultant means that the number of staff, staff hours we would have to dedicate to that item would, would increase exponentially, and that's probably not possible. So, again, I recommend that you initiate that item, but, but clearly, we have to do a lot more internal staff discussion on the entire Canyon Park Regional Growth Center item, and come back to you.
So if that thing dies, well, does die, stalls out.
It could free up some time.
Yeah. Okay. And so this comes back to us, right? And so you guys have another, you'll go back and look at whatever we talked about and come back with a final that we approve, or we approve it tonight?
No, you approve it tonight. What we typically do is we'll update the document, make sure that you get copies of it. We also send it to the planning commission, so they can sort of see the work program that's coming their way too, as well as the other boards and commissions. But we're hopeful that you can, you can take action tonight, and we don't have to come back to you.
Okay.
We will, however, come back to you in the future if we, if we get some of those 800 hours freed up, or have a different, a different approach on Canyon Park.
Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe?
So I have a concern about approving it tonight, given 800 hours and the consultants for Canyon Park. So I, I don't know that if we, if there's anything we can do to kind of bring that piece back?
But I think you just said, so if it, if it does fall apart, we don't have the consultant dollars, that they will come back then.
Okay.
So we'll prove it tonight, assuming miraculously Jennifer will produce 800, so whatever, $1,000. But if it doesn't, then it'll need to come back, because there's 800 hours of staff time. Yeah, okay. Councilmember McNeil?
So, in the grand scheme of things, the workflow process, I'm gathering from the conversations, the kind of the back and forth, and the meat and potatoes of this, is actually the Canyon Park area. It's 800 hours.
Yes.
If, how important is it for us as a city to continue that work?
Well, I think we've had several discussions about this in the past, both at the council retreat and other council meetings. And staff's feeling, I think, is that it's important to keep that momentum going. That's why I think we want to have some internal discussions and say, what, what can we do internally, staff-wise, to keep this project moving forward? And not just, and not just have it languish. And I don't think that would be fair to our stakeholders either. As Bruce said in his presentation, there's a lot of, there's a lot of synergy out there right now, and a lot of momentum. We'd hate to, hate to lose that.
So keeping up that, that's important. Is that, is it important for us regionally to, to ensure that we're having a positive dialogue with all the other partners outside of the city?
Yes, absolutely.
Not just our internal stakeholders, but outside?
Yes, absolutely. And I think.
Because losing, losing that designation, is that a bad thing?
Yes, it would be. And it's important, I think, for that reason too, to keep moving forward on this master plan for the Regional Growth Center, so that we're seen regionally to be doing what we need to be doing.
Okay, thank you so much, Guy.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, thank you. Let me just ask you, because I'm familiar with the fact that, oh, I want to say, sometimes there's a public-private partnership, or maybe the stakeholders could do some investing? Is that a possibility?
Well, that's, that's what I think we need to look at when we reexamine. How else can we reach our goals on this project without getting all the state funding that perhaps we were hoping for? There may be many ways of doing it, but, but that's a great suggestion.
I think, I think it could be done, and, and since they're so invested, you know, maybe they can be a partner.
All right. I think we're doing good there, right? So we're done with 2018? Do everything?
I believe so.
Okay. Plus a couple little things, and then minus B. Okay. So now we're on to the 2019. Is everybody doing okay? We're past our break moment? Yeah? Everybody's okay? Continue on? All right. Optional, 2019. I always feel weird about talking about 2019 when we do this. But, okay, first one, item number nine, amend BMC 12.06 blah, 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 so that residential care facilities actually reads assisted living facility, consistent with the definition in state regulations. That's 100 hours. Can you give us a little background on that one?
Certainly. So, and Bruce can, can weigh in if he needs to, if I don't cover it adequately. But when we first looked at this, it appeared to me to be a fairly simple, change our definitions to meet state definitions thing. But as Bruce got into it more, looking at it for the docket, he discovered that it's not really that simple. There are a lot of ways that we're, we're out of sync with state definitions for different types of care facilities. And I think it would, would probably take a lot more work than we initially thought. We're managing applications that come in now. We're, we're doing okay. We're, we're looking at state law and making sure that the application we receive, we're having to do some work upfront to make sure we understand exactly what sort of facility it is, and not just trusting our codes definitions. So we're doing a little more research in, in RCWs. I think we can continue to manage it that way. So our recommendation would be to put it on to 19, and have you look at it again when we bring the docket back next year, and make sure we still think we can tackle it then.
And have, have it go to the planning commission first, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Everybody okay with leaving that on 2019? It comes back next year anyways? Yes? Everybody's good? Okay. Item number 10, review the municipal code, signs of potential code amendments in light of the U.S. Supreme Court ruling of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. Oh, Paul's not there. Can we come back to this one, you guys? To when Paul comes back? Okay, let's skip this one. Item number 11 is the code amendments to revise the current regulations pertaining to adult entertainment. What's this one about?
This is another Paul one.
Okay. Let's skip that one. Maybe I should text Paul. No, I can't text from the desk. That's a no-no. Okay, item number 12, we'll come back to that. Item number 11, no, item number 12, Nike Hill, Shelton View, and Queensborough Plan and Code Amendments. Do you want to give the new council members especially a little background on this?
Sure, I'll ask, I'll ask Dave and Bruce to do that, or, or one of the two.
Yes, this is a plan and code amendment that went through the planning commission process. And then when we brought it to the council, the council identified the desire to defer it for a while. And it's just basically been sitting there. And essentially what it is, is it added some residential capacity right around the intersection of Marion Avenue and 220th, 228th Street, and basically right within that corner. And, and it included a couple other items, you know, the planning commission identified, okay, well, we should buy some more parks, lands up there. There were some policy provisions from that standpoint. But it was primarily about just that intersection area, and some lands along the eastern side of Marion Avenue, that basically the up so-and-so areas. One of the things that was kind of interesting about this is that we actually have a, a neighborhood activity zone identified within this area underneath one section of the conference of plan. And so the idea, oh, thank you. And so the idea was that this would basically implement that neighborhood activity area, which is basically right around this intersection here. This is 228th Street, and this is Marion Avenue. And this is basically the changes that the planning commission recommended just within this area. All the other areas, they identified leaving alone, or keeping that as is.
Bruce, or Mr. Blackburn, why you have this up? Can you kind of point out where the Shelton View Forest, the community group that wants to preserve it, what properties are you talking about?
Yes, and essentially what that is, this is a piece of property that's owned by Department of Natural Resources right now, the DNR site. The other property that they've been talking about is this one right here. And it's kind of called the MC Coast Property, Coast Equities, whatever you want to call it. And it's basically just north of that DNR site. And this piece of property right here, this is a small Canyon Ridge condominium, it's about 76 units within that area. So that property is between the DNR site and the Canyon Ridge condominiums.
And then the, the other DNR property that's marked R4,000 there, is that one for sale as well from DNR, or is it just the one next to the school?
Interestingly enough, DNR has this philosophy that these are lands that they're supposed to be provided for the trust, school trust fund. And so the idea is that they do have a, basically an obligation to provide funds from that. Logging is not really a very logical activity here, there's just not enough timber there. So basically, the concept is that DNR would be looking at, you know, lease or sell or something like that. Any of those options they would be looking at. They have identified to us pretty clearly that they're in no rush to do that, but it is one of the fundamentals of their, of their school trust program.
Okay. So, there we go. Councilmember McAuliffe?
So, in looking at this, I'm kind of wondering, are we continually pushing the, that wagon down the road? It looks like we, you know, initiated in 2016, then 2018 it reaffirmed, and then 2017 we, again, and now it's 2018. Are we continuing to just push it down the road? Is that what we're doing here? Or are we actually making some progress?
Well, that's a good question. It's basically one of those things where we're just identifying, look, let's take a look at this in 2019. And that would be the idea is, okay, that's when we would actually make, the city would actually make the decision on this. You've, as you've identified, this actually goes back to 2015, so it even goes a little bit further back than that. So there is some history on this one, and it's just one of those planning, planning amendments that have just been kind of waiting to have action taken on it.
So I'll add to that, just because I'll take the political lump. The, the council, the, in 2016, did not like this code amendment. And then we basically deferred it instead of just, I mean, I think there was a discussion, like, should we just kill it now, or defer it? And we felt bad about just destroying it, because the planning commission took some time and did the code amendments. And so we felt like, you know, there was a process there, and they, they did a good job. And I don't know if we have the appetite to just say, let's just, just delete it, dissolve it now, or should we leave it there? Because there was thought put into this, obviously, you know, and, and so, but I guess we, we had some, and it really, it was farther reaching than just this sub area. It was more of a philosophical issue that the council was concerned about, the planning commission members, and, and different things that I can get into detail offline with you. But it was, it was definitely not just about this little, and it's not little, but this, this, this area right here.
So if I may, I guess I would just request that somehow along the line, as a council, we have a good discussion about this, so that we don't just keep pushing it forward, but make some decision prior to our next time round.
Yeah, this is it. This is a good time to make a decision on this, if we, if we're going to make a decision. But we don't have to. Tonight, we can decide that we're not going to push this forward again.
But I think we would need more study on it before we, I would want to make that decision.
Okay. So we should leave it on? That's what that sounds like. Does anybody else have an opinion on this? There we go. Councilmember Zorn?
I was on planning commission when we were talking about this, so, you know, I have an appreciation for the amount of time and effort that went into it. I also know the, the different voices that we're invested in as we were discussing about this. My, my feeling is, hold off on it for two, two reasons, is that around this property, especially as we look down at Canyon Park, I feel like Canyon Park needs to get squared and settled away. It's settled, when we talk about population that we're putting in on this, because we're talking about the other end of 228th, right? My feeling is, get Canyon Park settled down. My feeling is get Canyon Park settled down, and then we can make some judgment calls about this, but I don't think we need to rush this. That's my opinion.
Do you have an opinion on keeping it on the docket for 2019 or?
I would choose to, if I were to choose, can I leap, can I, I'm not horse trading, but can I leap between it and another thing on keeping it on the docket? If I were to choose between it and South Riverside Drive, keeping on the docket for 2019, I would keep this on the docket. South Riverside Drive has more issues that I think we could just take off the docket that are, South Riverside Drive is much more complicated in actually executing. We're looking at that 102nd Bridge. We're looking at big budget ticket items that I feel like Riverside Drive, we could just make go away. As far as Nike Hill, 2019, 2020, I want to see what happens with Canyon Park first.
So, you would definitely want to leave that on. So, you, I'm just trying to rephrase it for you. So, item number 12, you want to keep it on there for 2019 and reevaluate it next year?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, sorry about that, Mr. Blackburn.
No, I just was just going to add to one thing because I think I, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Zorn is that in case there's a capacity issue with Canyon Park, this is also within Somish County, so if we did add a small capacity here, maybe we can do a little bit more with Canyon Park as far as the, you know, where are those lines actually end up being.
Deputy Mayor.
I agree with Councilmember Zorn. That's why I originally voted not to take this up, was because I had the same thought, which was, let's see how Canyon Park settles out before we go adding capacity on that already overused 228th.
So, your opinion would be to leave it on but defer to 2019? Sounds like a plan. Okay. So, now that the city attorney's back, we skipped a couple because you're out. I think it was item, yeah, item number, no, where was the signed one? There it is, item number 10.
10 and 11.
Could you give us a little briefing on this? Like, what does it entail?
So, in 2015, under Reed v. Gilbert, the Supreme Court of the United States determined that some of the signage restrictions for the town of Gilbert, Arizona, didn't pass constitutional muster because they were too restrictive on either commercial or non-commercial free speech. Since that ruling, there's been, that case has been cited about 1,700 times, and there are 48 decisions that don't follow Reed v. Gilbert, and so, in order for us to determine whether or not the city, the initial first blush, when Reed v. Gilbert came out, was that the city's sign code ran afoul of the Constitution or some provisions ran afoul of the Constitution. There has since been other case law in federal jurisdictions that have carved out exceptions and determined that some of the provisions of Reed v. Gilbert apply only to commercial speech or only to non-commercial speech, and it depends on where the signage is located. So, it would, now that the case law is a little bit more settled, we would have to go back, Reed v. Gilbert again, read the cases that have come since then to determine what provisions of our sign code, if any, would run afoul of the U.S. or Washington Constitution. I mean, it was decided two and a half years ago, and we haven't taken action. There are some provisions of our code that I have told code enforcement not to enforce. So, we can still continue down that path and simply not enforce the ones that are questionable, or we can put the time and effort into really giving it a go, to really kind of take the time to revise it, inconsistent with the current law.
And so, then, well, it says right there, your work will not be in the 100 hours listed here.
Not in the 100, no, definitely not 100 hours, but, I mean, it'd be substantial. There is a significant amount of case law that's been created in response to Reed v. Gilbert that we would have to wade through.
And so, your recommendation would be to leave it on here for consideration in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Is there any details you can give us about what's allowed that, or that we should be allowing, or do you not want to go into details?
For purposes of potential litigation, I'd prefer not to give any sort of legal analysis as to what I think.
We can get sued for.
Correct.
Fair enough. All right. So, we'll leave it on there for 2019. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Item number 11, code amendments to revise the current regulations pertaining to adult entertainment.
That was also an issue that came up a couple of years ago. There was enforcement action taken against Paradise Espresso. The hearing examiner determined that some of our code provisions, both in Title V and Title 12, were inconsistent and didn't provide enough guidance and have enough essentially teeth to be able to do anything. I believe he specifically said that some of our definitions were circular, and so, in order for us to enforce any sort of code violations regarding adult entertainment, we would have to revise our code. There aren't, in recent years, I haven't heard as many complaints as we've heard, as we were hearing four, five years ago. Four, five years ago, it was pretty consistent, we were getting complaints. Those have since died off.
Okay. That's the background. So, how do the council feel about leaving it on for consideration in 2018 or taking it off? Leave it on? Leave it on? Okay, we'll leave it on. And let's see, we talked about Nike Hill, leaving that on, so now let's get on to South Riverside Drive planning code amendments. So, Councilmember Zorn has already said that she wouldn't be too upset if this went away, I believe. Is that okay? Okay. Anybody else have input on this one? Deputy Mayor.
I feel the same way. The bridge is a serious problem. I particularly don't like the recommendation to expand the senior housing overlay. We have public safety issues already, and every time we add senior housing, we only expand that issue. And also, the access over the bridge is only exacerbated with more senior housing and more population, so. And in addition, there are issues regarding landslides and whatnot in that area as well.
Anybody else? Catherine McNeil.
I just had a question surrounding zoning for senior housing and affordability. Are we looking, is that something that can be looked at? How zoning would work for senior housing affordability?
Yeah, that is something that we will address in the housing strategy next week. Here in this, the Planning Commission recommendation didn't include expanding the specialized senior housing overlay, and they instead decided, since we knew, they knew that the housing strategy update was coming up, they said, well, let's wait and look at that as part of the housing strategy. So, what they did recommend was applying the R-7200 zoning that was, that was applied to the two parcels outlined in yellow here, to that entire R-9600 between the specialized senior housing overlay and 405 on the north slopes of Nike Hill, so.
So, changing to 7200 but not the senior?
Not as part of that action. That was something they identified as, there may be some good reasons to revisit that specialized senior housing overlay area, but they didn't feel like they had enough background information to act on that at that time.
Okay, so this would be another area that could be looked at after we do our strategic housing plan, correct?
Yeah, whether you look at this whole, this whole area or if you just look at specialized senior housing overlay and whether it makes sense to either expand it or apply it to other areas of the city.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Do you want to keep it or do you want to delete it? Delete? All right, there's three deletes. Is there another delete? There's a fourth delete. Shelton View or East Riverside Drive, that item, what is it, item 13? Yep, item 13, gone. Item 14, comprehensive update to the landscape regulations of BMC 1218. We already guys, we already talked about this earlier a little bit? Same one, right? Okay.
Yes, correct.
So, it's proposed in 2019 to go to the Planning Commission. How do you feel about that? It's painful, isn't it? Take a look, Catherine Ralston. This is like one of the hardest items that we ever will have, I promise.
That's what you said last time.
Well, there's more than one, see? How do we feel about leaving this on the list for 2019? Revisit it in 2019? Everybody's good? Okay, 14's good. 15, code amendments regarding safe injection sites. Ooh, this is a fun one. I don't even know what to say. Do we want to leave this on and consider it in 2019 or do we want to delete it? Councilmember Zorn.
I can speak to it. I've been pretty vocal. How do I take this and not make it more emotionally laden than it needs to be? When I was out doorbelling, every day that I doorbell, people were saying, no safe injection sites. So, I know that there are people who are invested in this, and we're not making, we're not saying no safe injection sites, but I feel like Bothell has some priorities as far as mental health and more comprehensive medical care that we do not need to be taking on Seattle's problems. I know Seattle has, through a lot of good intentions, has a huge problem, and Bothell needs to take care of its own. That's my heavy, heavy-handed bias. We have limited resources and though, because it's not in our code, you know, we're feeling pretty safe, but I would like it on 2019 so that, so that as this year progresses, if the dynamics change, it's here and ready to be talked about for 2019, not 2018.
Okay. Does anybody else? Catherine McCall.
Currently, it is, it is not permissible in the city of Bothell, correct? So, 150 hours spent on this, is that still happening? If you defer 2019, are you still using 150 hours on it?
Yes, I believe so. Those hours wouldn't, those hours would only come into play if we tackled this in 2019 and did a code amendment to address it explicitly. If we leave our code the way it is now, our interpretation is that we would not approve a business license for a safe injection site under our current code interpretation. If we continue with that way, then no staff hours are required to work on it, but understand that that's just an interpretation. Our code doesn't explicitly talk about safe injection sites. What it does say is that if you have a use in your permitted use tables in the zoning code that's not explicitly addressed, then it's not permitted.
So, maybe we should go down the line. Do we want to keep it for 2019 or delete? Councilmember Agnew?
Per conversation, why don't we keep it till 2019?
Okay, Councilmember McCall? Catherine McNeil? Okay, it stays. Moving on to item 16, code amendments to create a design review board. I guess we bumped that up to 2018.
Well, you essentially put the conversation into a different arena.
Okay.
With the downtown, the study session and the downtown design code amendments, correct?
So, we can just remove this one, then?
Yes.
Okay, everybody okay with removing item 16? Gone, okay. How many are they? Oh, that's the last one, isn't it?
That's it. We do need a motion from council, though, to.
All right, just so, I took notes.
Okay.
So, okay, so for item six, we removed B, which is the, to review the increased number of lots through the short plat process, and in return for that wonderful thing of taking something away, we added the design review board, and then in item seven, we added the form feel review of the downtown development.
We didn't add a design review board.
Oh, what was it?
We added time in number seven for design standards, and we added time in number eight to codify when the Landmark Board reviews buildings in the special, I can't remember what it's called, special downtown subarea, whatever it is.
And number seven is the item that would be preceded by the study session.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Could you please clarify what codify means to?
Sure. So, codify means that it's in code, so we would adopt a code change, basically.
So, that the, what the, what the review board determines is the design standard, that that's in code? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we would, we would establish that the Landmark Board would have the opportunity to review a plan. And, correct me if I'm getting this wrong. That's kidding. At what point in the process they're supposed to review, the Landmark Board's supposed to review a project to say, like, yes, this meets our taste or?
Right, but they're only advisory.
They're only advisory.
Okay, so codify doesn't take, make, take another step? They're still just advisory.
Yeah, but it also puts in a code that that step needs to be taken by the, by the project proponent.
They need to at least go before the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but they could, I guess they could turn around and be like, yeah, great anyways, and keep moving along with their project, but staff is there too, so. Okay, since I butched that up, okay, so is item seven and eight's all good, item 13, we removed, and I think that's it, right?
16, you're moved.
See, I'm wiped out. I have 16 removed, okay. Councilmember McNeil?
So, before we take the vote, can I ask a question on the item with the safe injection sites?
Sure. Go.
So, if we leave that in this year, does that mean that that work will get done without it coming back to this council?
No, all of the items that you deferred to 2019, we will put on the 2019 docket and have you talk about them again to make sure you still want to pursue them, and then we'll ask you to prioritize them.
Okay.
So, they keep the conversation open on those items, is what it does.
So, according to the mayor, we can go through this whole process again?
Yes, we do it, we do it annually.
Yeah.
Because we enjoy it so much.
It's so fun. City Attorney?
I think the thing to keep in mind that is if King County, for some reason, decided based on their criteria to want to cite something in Bothell, they would come to the Bothell City Council, and it would take an affirmative vote of the council to say, yes, we are going to cite a safe injection site in the city of Bothell. If King County were to take that move to try to get the council to vote on it, I think we would have to revisit this docket entry to then move it up in order to respond to King County's request. But unless and until that happens, I don't see the need to put staff hours into it.
And if we got really concerned, we can do an emergency meeting and do an emergency ordinance, correct? That would come and make, be effective immediately and all that and public hearing.
I'd like to think through that answer, but that is, seems to be an option that other cities have taken.
Yeah, it's not a fun option, though. Okay, so is there a motion?
I move what he said.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Second by Councilmember McNeil to do exactly what I say. Is there any discussion on what I said?
I'd like to speak to my motion.
All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, everyone, for taking into account my recommendations, and I just wanted to say, this by far has been the best process, I thought, for docketing because it was really, really clear what we're committing to. Prior, it felt a little wishy-washy, like, well, we want to get all these things done, but we didn't have any numbers, and so, it didn't, if that makes sense. It made decision-making much easier, and so, I appreciate the change to the process. So, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Oh, I'm sorry, is there more discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to thank the staff for their presentation and all the hard work on this. I also am very hopeful that we come in just under the hours.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Passes unanimously. Is there a motion adjourned?
So, moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the motion? No? Okay, good, go ahead and place your vote. Passed unanimously, we're adjourned.